Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for February 20th, 2024. My name is Carrie Martnik. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few notices to read. This open meeting of the public, I'm sorry. The open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law in March 29, 2023. All members of the planning board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The act allows the planning board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to the Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative to ensure that persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard. Amy Peretzky?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Billy Milton?
Here.
Phil Pierce?
Here.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
You're muted. Sorry.
Bob Federico?
Here.
Great. Okay. Ground rules for the meeting. For presenter and applicants on the agenda, Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will write their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer or not speaking and speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair taking care to identify themselves. These folk taken by the board will be conducted by roll call. For public comment, after members have spoken, Chair will afford public comment as follows. By phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the Chair. Please note, part of your phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their name and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed all public commentators, the Chair will call on each name and afford approximately three minutes for those comments. There is no executive session tonight. So with that, we will get started with the agenda. Lori, do you happen to have the, you know, the public hearing just came into my mailbox?
Do.
Do you want me to read that? Or do you want me to read, do you want me to read that into the meeting?
Whichever you prefer, I'd be happy to read it, or you can read it?
Okay. Let's see, how about, let me see if I can open it here. Let's see how long it is. If it's long, oh, this looks like one you would love to do.
Oh, yes, I'm sure. I would love to read all that.
If you don't mind, otherwise, I really don't mind.
No, that's fine. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 20th, 2024 at 6:00 PM for the purpose of seeking public opinion on proposed amendments to the zoning map in the following sections of the Northborough Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 7. Complete text of the proposed amendments and proposed zoning map is available on the Planning Department webpage. Section 7-03-030, Board of Appeals. Section 7-03-060, Design Review. Section 7-04-010, Classification of Districts. Section 7-05-010, General Provisions. Section 7-05-020, Classification of Uses. Section 7-05-030, Table of Uses, Part B, Commercial and Industrial Districts. Section 7-06-020, Table 2, Table of Density and Dimensional Regulations. Section 7-07-010, Groundwater Protection Overlay District. Section 7-07-030, or 010, Groundwater Protection Overlay District. Section 7-07-030, Major Commercial Development Overlay District. Section 7-09-020, Site Design Standards. Section 7-09-030, Off-Street Parking and Loading. Section 7-09-040, Signs. Zoning map by creating a new Highway Business Southwest District to include all land within the industrial district in the vicinity of the Southwest Connector as shown on the map entitled Highway Business Southwest District Map. Zoning map by creating a new Multifamily Development Overlay District to include areas titled Southwest Connector Multifamily Development Subdistrict and Downtown Multifamily Development Subdistrict as shown on the map entitled Multifamily Development Overlay District Map. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29, 2023. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted to participate in the public comment portions of this meeting from a PC, Mac, iPad, iZone, or Android device. Please click this URL to join. Please click the link below to join the webinar. Password 531739, or tap 1, or one tap mobile 3017158592.
Great. Thank you so much for reading that into the record. So Lori, you have, we're going to go through our bylaws and let's see, this is a public hearing. So what we'll do for tonight's format is we'll go through each one and then provide an opportunity for members of the public to comment as they choose. We will not be closing the hearing this evening, so that will remain open. However, we will, of course, continue to accept comments for as long as the hearing is open. So if you don't get to comment tonight and you want to send in an email, you can do that as well. Lori, you have a presentation you wanted to share?
I do. All right. So I have, can everybody see this PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And to a slideshow. So I thought I'd go into a little bit of background information, so I'm going a little bit out of order. So the MBTA bylaw, it seems to be the bylaw that most folks are interested in. So I thought that I would advance that to the front and then all of the other articles would go in order. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of background information on the new changes to the zoning act, which is the reason why we're doing an MBTA bylaw. So the new section of the zoning act is Section 3A. So this, this new law was passed back in 2021. It was signed into law by Governor Baker. It included a whole range of housing provisions, which included lowering the threshold for town meeting vote for certain zoning provisions, including the MBTA bylaw. Normally, zoning changes require a supermajority vote, but there are certain zoning changes that are now a majority vote, including the MBTA bylaw. So Section 18 of the Economic Development Bill includes this Section 3A. So it encourages communities that are designated as MBTA communities to adopt zoning districts where multifamily zoning is permitted by right. So there are 175 communities that are subject to this law, including the town of Northborough. So there are different classes of communities. So the town of Northborough is shown as it is considered an adjacent community. So that means that it is, here it is. It is adjacent to a community that has the commuter rail. So commuter rail communities are in green here. And the inner core communities, those are ones that are served by the, the train itself. So the subway system or the bus system. So what this says is for the town of Northborough, it means that we have to create at least one zoning district where multifamily housing is permitted as a right and it has to meet certain criteria. So the minimum gross density is 15 units per acre. The units must be suitable for families with children. So that means that we can't adopt limits on the size of units, the number or size of bedrooms, or the number or age of occupants. The district must be at least 50 acres in size, and that's 50 acres of developable land. So there are certain excluded lands that largely has to do with environmental constraints. So if we create a district that has multiple sub-districts, at least one of the sub-districts must contain 25 contiguous acres of land and no sub-district can contain less than five acres of contiguous land. We can require site plan approval, but we can't use it as a reason for imposing conditions that make a project undevelopable. So here are some examples of projects that contain greater than 15 units per acre within the town of Northborough. So the residence at the Falls is located on Hudson Street. It has 40 units. It's an adaptive reuse of a mill building. So the building height, of course, as you could see in this picture, is two stories and the density is 21 units per acre. Here's another example of a project that would comply. So this is located at 31 Blake Street. There are 12 units on .23 acres of land. As you can see, there's three stories and this would average 52 units per acre. So obviously, a much greater density than the 15 units per acre that we're talking about. Here's an example of a project that's similar to the 15 units per acre. This is actually within our proposed MBTA district, Heritage Village. This is a housing authority-owned property. They have 33 one-bedroom units on 1.93 acres of land. The building heights vary from one to two stories and it averages 17 units per acre. And this is another project that we're proposing to include within our MBTA district. This is Avalon of Northborough. There's 382 units on 42 acres. The building height averages three to four acres, although there is one building that has five stories and the density averages nine units per acre. Just something that I wanted to mention, a lot of times people talk about concerns about the, the school enrollment. And I just wanted to point out that in the last 10 years, Northborough School enrollment has dropped by over 400 students. This is an image that shows the average number of new residential building permits that have been issued by year. And you can see over the last few years, there's been a significant drop in the number of residential building permits. So you could see 2010 was kind of a banner year for attached single-family dwellings. We haven't seen much of that in the last few years and you could see that even the single-figure count has been hovering around 10 building permits per year. So an important thing to recognize about this MBTA zoning is there is no production mandate. We are required to zone for multifamily housing, but we are not required to build any multifamily housing. So another thing that it's important to note is that communities are not required to pay for infrastructure upgrades. Like, for example, one of the properties in our proposed district does not currently have sewer capacity. We are not required by law to upgrade, to provide for that sewer capacity. That would still be on the shoulders of whoever wanted to develop the project. And I wanted to note that there is no override of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act or Title V. Those laws are still in place. So what are the consequences if we do not comply with the legislation? The major consequence is that we will lose out on a number of state grants that I was hoping to apply for, for the downtown revitalization project. We are also considering applying for Mass Works funding to extend the sewer to Route 9. Many of the properties that are on Route 9 have failing septic systems, so that has been identified as a major capital improvement goal. Also, the state, the Attorney General's Office, has stated publicly that they intend to pursue legal action against communities that don't comply. So this is, so we have two sub-districts. So what we're proposing to do is an MBTA overlay district. So it's actually called the Multifamily Development Overlay District. And that overlay district will consist of two different sub-districts. And they're shown on the zoning map, kind of roughly. So the number one sub-district is called the Southwest Connector Subdistrict. It consists of three parcels of land, including Avalon, Northborough, an undeveloped parcel of land that has a right-of-way access via Route 20, and then the O'Connell Lodge. The other sub-district that we're considering is in the downtown area. It's called the Downtown Subdistrict. Consists of 11.29 acres of land and the properties that we are interested in including are an undeveloped parcel off of Hudson Street at the corner of Hudson and River Street. The Maytech Instruments property at 56 Hudson. There is a property that is owned by E.L. Harvey &amp; Sons. I believe the address is 77 Main Street. That's approximately 10 acres of land. I have identified all 10 acres, but we're only proposing to include five acres of it. The Northborough Town Office is, for those who do not know, the town is considering relocating out of the current building to another location. And should that happen, then the current Town Office's building would be available for reuse. And then we have two other fully developed parcels of land. Heritage Village, as I mentioned, is currently developed at the, at 17 units per acre, is owned by the housing authority. And just to the north of that is another townhouse development that is already developed at this point. So some key aspects of the bylaw is that townhouses, multifamily homes, and mixed-use developments would be allowed by right, subject to site plan review by the planning board. Business uses that currently trigger the special permit in the underlying zoning district would still trigger the special permit in the overlay. Most of the dimensional requirements, the minimum lawn size, the frontage, the height and the setback requirements would be consistent with the underlying zoning. What would change is the, the density. So what we are proposing is that eight dwellings per acre for townhouses and 15 dwellings per acre for multifamily and mixed-use developments. If somebody were interested in redeveloping an existing building, like the Town Office's or the O'Connell Lodge, then they would be able to, to build at a greater density than 15 units per acre. They just have to demonstrate how many units they could fit within the existing footprint of the building. So the bylaw sets design standards for buildings, walkways, curbing, off-street parking, outdoor lighting, landscaping, and open space. Large developments would be required to provide outdoor amenities. And then, as we've currently written into the bylaw, 10% of the dwelling units within developments containing 10 or more dwellings would be permanently restricted for households qualifying as low-income. So that means that 90% of the units would be market rate. So we currently have a consultant looking at the affordability of increasing the 10% affordability threshold above and beyond that, possibly 15%. We should get the results of that study tomorrow. So at this point, we're proposing 10%, but it may ultimately be more than that. So just kind of some facts about our aggregate district. It's 59.23 acres of land, although some of that land is considered excluded and that's because it has environmental constraints. So as I stated in the beginning, we need to have, excuse me, at least 50 acres of developable land. So there's a, an Excel spreadsheet that helps us identify whether we are meeting the, the target or not. So there are nine parcels that are currently included within our overlay district, our two overlays. And just some key points is that we've been working really hard to ensure that the locations that we have identified for the MBTA compliance also complies with the goals and objectives stated in the 2020 Master Plan and the recently completed 2023 Downtown Revitalization Plan Report. So this is something that we have to do. We don't really have a choice. However, the key is for us to do it in such a way that we are accomplishing goals and objectives that the town wanted to accomplish anyway. So it ends up being a win-win instead of a punishment. So that's what I have on the MBTA bylaw. I'm happy to hear any questions or comments at this point.
Okay, great. Board members, any additional questions or comments? Amy?
Hi.
Would you mind not sharing for a second? Because I can't see everybody when the, there we go. Thank you.
Um, I guess one thing I picked up on now that I didn't pick up on the other meetings was the greater density for reuse. How many units are in Econno Lodge right now?
I am going to defer to Bob on that. I can't remember off the top of my head.
I believe there's 68.
So we could, I mean, that's not something that has to be in there. We don't have to have the clause, greater density for reuse. So I'm thinking-
It's going to be really hard to redevelop a building that currently exists and keep to the 15 units per acre. So as I, as I showed you with that mill building, you know, the Econno Lodge is already set up with bathrooms and bedrooms. So they could be studios or they could be one-bedroom units. So they could end up combining units, but the footprint is the footprint. So it may not make sense to convert those 15 units, I mean, sorry, those 68 units into, say, 20 units to keep to that 15 units per acre. So whenever you're doing an adaptive reuse of an existing building, in order to be successful, you have to be flexible.
Okay. Well, when we first looked at it, it was, it's under two acres. So in my mind, it was going to be max about 30 units. So now it could be 68 units. I don't know. I guess it's just something I wanted to think about and I wanted to ask if, do we need the greater density for reuse? Because the way it's been talked about too is that they're thinking of combining it with Shoesbury if it can happen. So I would assume they would tear that down. And if they tear that down, is it now 15 units per acre? Or do they get their 68 units because that's what they add?
If they're tearing down the Econno Lodge and building new, then it's 15 units per acre. So they would only get the greater density if they reuse the existing building.
Do we need to put that in there to make that clear? Because I, I can see that not translating.
Well, I, I did say the adaptive reuse of the existing building. So it should be clear.
We could ask Town Council, you know, because today-
He did, he did already review that language and he was okay with it. It says, "For adaptive reuse or substantial restoration of existing buildings, the proposed residential density shall be based upon the demonstrated ability of the existing building to accommodate such density or intensity abuse."
I, I just know that you're going to talk to him again, so I would like just to ask him. Because today he was like, it's better to be super clear about things than, than not. Because I wasn't even clear on this until now. It just popped up when you were presenting it.
The numbers for the student enrollment, since the superintendent will be sitting in the audience at town meeting, did those numbers come from the superintendent or?
They did. They came from the, from the state website.
Oh, no, no, but from our superintendent, did he actually, like, agree those were, that looked right to him?
I can ask him, but that is the information that they are providing to the state.
Okay. I think we should give him a courtesy because he will be in the audience. Like, this is what we're saying and presenting because that would really be a beg on our face to have him stand up and say, actually, I don't agree with those numbers. Bill, do you have something too?
Yeah, so those numbers are actually what Desi has on their, on their site. I pulled those, those same numbers as well. So that's what the Department of Education has from the state.
Yeah, I think they probably are right. I was just, I'm just thinking if, in a scenario where we're trying to make this a seamless process, it would be unfortunate to have any confusion over those numbers or just a courtesy heads up, really.
And just one other thing, if, so going back to what we were talking about before, if they were to do a teardown, there's nothing saying that they have to do 15 units per acre, right? That's up to the builder on whether they want, they could do eight units, right? They could make it an Avalon style if they were going to make it that large, you know, including the, the Shoesbury, the old Shoesbury Village as well as Econno Lodge.
Yep.
Okay. Other questions from the board on this one? Oh, Amy, you have one?
I have one more. Um, Lori, you showed your chart about building permits that have been released in the last couple of years. Do you know how many building permits there were in the last five years?
I would have to add that up, but this information is coming from the Building Inspector's Annual Report.
Yeah. Do you think it was-
So I, you know, this is, I have to look at my Excel spreadsheet to tell you exactly how many over a five-year timeframe.
Okay. I can ask you offline.
Yeah. I can send that to you tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I have a question, Lori. The, you mentioned the 15% affordability and that is above what the town at this time is now requiring. Can you give me some of your rationale for going with that number? And what, is it just for the MBTA community districts?
I'm not suggesting that we go to 15%. Right now in the bylaw, it says 10%. Uh right now in the bylaw, it says ten percent, but the whole point of uh doing the affordability analysis uh which we're doing with the RKG Associates is to see if projects will still be affordable if we go above the ten percent. So I was just taking fifteen percent out of the sky. So it could be ten percent, it could be eleven percent, twelve percent. I won't be able to tell you. Uh we'll have that discussion at our next meeting when the results are in and you can see what the affordability analysis says and whether you want to go above and beyond the ten percent, or you just wanna keep it at ten percent.
So are you saying that developers wouldn't come in, or you your concern is developers wouldn't come in? If it were higher than ten percent, what, when you're, what are you talking about when you're saying the affordability of the project, of the project itself?
Yes. Um so uh the, the state is requiring us, so if the town is interested in creating a bylaw that goes above and beyond ten percent. So they have maximized the affordability at ten percent. So they said that if towns are interested in going above and beyond ten percent, then they have to provide us provide them with an affordability analysis. So essentially, what that says is that um you can still do a multifamily project of ten or more units in the downtown area. And it still is affordable for developers to do, even if the percentage is, say, twelve percent affordability. So it's, it's a mathematical exercise that RKG Associates is doing for us to determine if uh the market is hot enough in the town of Northborough to support a project that has greater than ten percent affordability.
Okay, I I guess I'm not sure what the, what the benefit of that is.
Uh well, we're right now at ten point two-eight percent. Right. Come, you know, as far as our affordability amount in the town of Northborough. So we're very close to slipping under ten percent. So if we slip under ten percent, then that means the town could be forced to do a chapter, chapter forty B in a, in a place in town where maybe you don't want multifamily housing. So that's the benefit of staying above the ten percent threshold.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I guess if we just stay with our ten percent or then.
So the challenge, the challenge is that the more market rate units that are built in the community. So right now, the vast majority of the housing that's built in Northborough is uh A and R projects. So they are single-family homes that are built on existing streets. So they're not in subdivisions, and they're not in multifamily developments. And there's an average of about ten of those per year. So the more of those types of units, and then there's no affordable units built, then we lose our percentage. You know, you have to constantly be be building affordable units if you're constantly building market rate units.
Hmm. Got it.
Amy, did you have something? You had your hand up.
No, and Lori just answered it.
Okay, other questions from the board? All right, I'll open up to public comments, and then also we got some emails too that I'll recognize um after we have the public comments here. So I see a couple of hands up. Um would just, if you put your hand up and let me know your name and address for the minutes, that'd be great. First, I have um Lisa Micali. Hi, Lisa. Oops, actually, I'm gonna bring you over where I can talk. There you go.
Hi there.
Hi, Lisa, just your name and address.
Hi, Lisa Micali, thirteen Maple Street. So I have a couple of remarks, some questions. The first off, when we were talking about going over that or under that ten percent that's necessary for affordable housing, um I understand that we're in the upper, what, thirty percent of all the towns and cities in Massachusetts that are, that are in that number, where there's at least seventy-four other, or seventy-four percent of other towns that have not even complied at ten percent. So are they more looking at us and not at the other cities and towns, or why is it so important for us to be worried about that right now?
So once the town falls below its threshold, then the town is open to forty Bs. So it doesn't matter if the town's at nine point eight percent or nine point five percent. If, if the town is below ten percent, then a forty B can come in. And uh the ZBA um will most likely have to approve it. So the idea of creating affordable housing on the town's terms is you're still creating affordable housing, but you're doing it in locations that you think is appropriate for affordable housing instead of having uh chapter fee, a forty B development happen on like prime agricultural land, or, you know, a beloved um open space area that people like to hike in. So.
So you're saying that because that they could just, would they have to go for a variance or something to be able to build on industrial or or open space?
Um they would go for a comprehensive permit from the ZBA. So it's not a variance, but it works very similar to a variance. So pretty much uh they throw the zoning bylaws in the trash, uh and they build whatever density they want.
But on areas such as open space, like if we were to have, we would have an open space area that was uh had a uh restriction on it, they'd be able to just build on that anyway?
No. No, if, if it's town-owned land, then they wouldn't be able to build on town-owned lands unless the town wants it to build on the town-owned land. Um but they could build on industrial land, or they could build on a farm uh that wasn't uh protected. That would be possible.
Okay, but of course, those, all those lots would have to be up for sale. They couldn't just take it. They'd have to, they'd have to be able to make the farmer sell to them or give them such a nice amount that the farmer would be interested in selling to them.
Correct. I mean, the property owner would have to be a willing participant.
Okay. All right. So then the next, um, there were two other questions. Um you were saying that by the, by coming to downtown to create higher density, that and not to create higher density, but when we're talking about higher density, that doing, it was doing something that was already desired by the master plan. So what's desired by the master plan in that vein?
Um so there are recommendations and goals and objectives in the master plan that speak to increasing the density uh in the downtown area. So um one is review the town zoning bylaw for opportunities to consider mixed uses in downtown that can promote and support walkability. There's another goal that says continue to maintain and encourage a diversity of housing options to increase housing affordability and choice for all ages and to ensure that at least ten percent of the town's housing inventory continues to be deemed affordable under state guidelines. Uh three, promote housing types that accommodate future growth in the community while maintaining and enhancing the existing character of residential neighborhoods. Um and a goal that's in the downtown revitalization plan report is to review the town zoning regulations to allow for higher density mixed-use development in the greater downtown area.
Hmm. Well, um and I guess the next question that I would have is that you've put down something in the downtown area. Um we've already, I mean, how much of what's already developed in this way downtown matters? Does that, does that have a help of numbers, or is that put out to the side and we just need to do increases, just to do increases?
Not quite sure I understand. Are you asking me how much of this area is already developed?
Um yeah, I'd say for the downtown, where you're looking to add more things for the downtown now, because you've got uh, you've got like seven minor in place, and then behind it are condos. And then across the street is another building that's gonna have four, four bed, four units. Um kind of all in that same area, which I guess is downtown. Um how many other areas do we have that are already somewhat uh saturated?
So pretty much all of the areas that we have identified with uh two small exceptions are developed. Uh so uh like I, like I explained, there is no development mandate. We're just zoning land. Uh so it could be a circumstance where um these areas are never developed, developed at a greater density than is already shown. Or there is the possibility that the existing land uses will be demolished. And um the, the parcels will be developed in a different way. Uh they could be developed, you know, for less than fifteen units per acre. It could be, say, like Avalon is nine units per acre. Or it could be, you know, five units per acre, or one unit per acre. Um so this is just a zoning exercise. It's not to say that this land should be developed at any density.
Hmm. So, all right, because I mean, I I wonder if that's the case, and then doing those, the three, most probably two pieces of land, but, but the Harvey land and the what is it, the Martek land? That's that. Maytech? Um I mean, they're, they've already applied to reconstruct part of that building. And then the land that's across the street that, that you've put in there is pretty tiny. I was kind of funny, because I've seen that, and it's, it houses maybe I don't know, six cars, and then it drops off into the waterway. So what would they be able to put on that piece?
It's unlikely to be developed at much density. It's not very developable, as you pointed out.
So Lisa, we just have to provide the space. We don't have to um have plans for development or anything like that. It's just providing the opportunity for development on the fifty acres.
Okay. So when you're taking downtown, you're giving it, what, five acres altogether?
What is the downtown? So there's forty-five?
Eleven, eleven um point two-nine acres.
And is that with half of Harv, considering half of Harvey?
That, that's considering five acres of the Harvey parcel.
Okay.
Right. And the last question on that, eh, the Harvey parcel is supposedly um in a water, in a waterway, or a um, some sort of water issue?
It has a river that abuts it. So uh development is limited by the Rivers Protection Act buffer, which is two hundred feet on either side of a perennial river or stream. So the first hundred feet on either side is a no-build buffer. And then the second hundred feet you can build, but they're very limited.
Okay. Um, all right, thank you. Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, next I have Scott Rogers. I'll bring you over. Just your name and address. Hi, Scott.
Hi, yes, Scott Rogers, twenty-six Tomahawk Drive. Hopefully, the microphone is working well enough that you can hear me. I'm on a alternate device here. Uh first question, how many attendees on the public hearing tonight?
Like ten?
Excellent. Um first question then uh kind of continues to talk about the mapping and the parcels. Um Lori or or whomever, just to make sure I'm, I'm oriented to the maps. We were just speaking about the downtown uh multifamily development sub-district. Total size, eleven point two-nine, that we subtract out that area of excluded land to get to a developable land area?
That's correct. So not all of the parcels. So we, we did this analysis activity um several months ago, maybe about six months ago. And so not all of the parcels that are included in the scheme currently have been analyzed. So there are a couple of parcels that have not yet been analyzed. So um eh, we don't have an accurate count of the excluded lands currently. Um so three of the parcels that we're considering have already been analyzed, so that takes off two point seven five acres of land. Um but there's one, two, three parcels that have not been analyzed um that still have to be put into the equation.
So for example, that, that talk about the Harvey property and the one that's put buffer on the river, is that included in the, the current two point five exclusion, or two seven five exclusion? Or would that need to be, be one of the parcel, parcels to be analyzed further?
So half of the Harvey land has been analyzed. So five acres of Harvey has been analyzed. Um the, the parcel that's on the other side of River Street has not yet been analyzed, nor has the condo development to the north of Center Drive.
Okay. And so that's, that it helps explain that the fifty-nine acres total gives you some buffer if more excluded land is identified. Uh and I guess you've got a relief point if, if a lot more excluded or non-developed land was identified and excluded, you could throw another acre of the Harvey property in, you know, for flexibility. You've got, you've got some room to maneuver there, if, if I'm reading it correctly.
That is correct. That, that is the rationale.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Anything else, Scott? No. Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have um Rick Leaf. Just your name and address. Hi, Rick.
Hi, uh Rick Leaf, thirty Wiles Farm Road. Um I'm speaking tonight as the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Just quick background, the Master Plan Implementation Committee was formed to work with the town to implement recommendations that came out of the two thousand twenty master plan. And out of those, the thing that came up uh most frequently, had the greatest interest in the town when the master plan was developed, was the ability to improve um the downtown area. And so the committee decided to work on that and further that particular recommendation with the town, which led to the development of a downtown master plan and the downtown revitalization report that Lori referenced. Because the MPIC is continually interested in where this is all going. At our meeting last week, uh we had Lori make a presentation on these zoning articles to us to understand how they impacted the downtown. And um uh the uh, the MPIC is in support um of this particular zoning article, especially of that part that uh, that impacts the downtown, really for two reasons. One um is that the report indicates that successful downtowns tend to have people living in, in around them that are within walking distance and frequent the businesses in the downtown. And to the extent that over time, some amount of additional housing might be developed because of this would benefit the overall use and viability of the downtown. The committee has no preconceived notion as to how many units and when, only that this particular zoning would make possible at some point, the possibility of some increase of people living in and around the downtown area. And the consultants who did the report for us have indicated that many successful downtowns uh have a, a community of people living in and around the downtown that frequent the businesses. It's also an incentive for developers to want to develop. So for that reason, the committee uh asked me to indicate their support for this zoning. The other thing is that to the extent that we start to go forward with downtown development, grant funding from the state is gonna be a critical funding source to limit um uh Warren Articles the town may have to present, to ask taxpayers. um uh warrant articles the town may have to present, ask taxpayers to fund some of this uh through tax dollars. Not to say that some of that might not be needed, but to the extent that uh state grants are available to help offset the cost of downtown revitalization, um then that's a very important factor. And if in fact, we can get some zoning like this passed and approved by the state and continue to be eligible for state grant funding, that would certainly help downtown revitalization going forward. So for those two reasons, um the committee is in favor of this, of these, this particular zoning article and asked me to present that uh, uh to the Planning Board tonight. So that's uh kind of the position of the MPIC and I wanted to relay that uh as this public hearing tonight.
Okay, great. Thanks for sharing that, Rick. Um, Carter Brannon, I have you here. If you want to share your name and address?
Um, yep. Hi, I'm Carter Brannon, twenty-two Sherlin Drive. Um, I had a couple of questions about this. Um, my first one is um, I guess just a question about the, the map. Uh, was it, did you say there was, it was nine parcels total for the district?
Yeah, I'm just gonna go back to the map, so that.
Yeah, I was, I mean, I was just kind of, that, that seems kind of like limited, kind of that, that it's, it's, it seems like it, you're, if any of these were to be developed, it would require like very specific people and kind of seems to favor like specific, you know, landowners or developers that rather than if it was a wider, I mean, again, like a same size, but more parcels would allow the, allow like the market and there'd be more kind of, more kind of potential for, for construction.
You know, there are pluses and minuses. Um, if somebody is interested in doing a large development, then it's much easier for them to do that on a large parcel of land. Um, for like small parcels of land, if you're talking about an acre here or an acre there, so kind of in the downtown area, uh you're limited because there's only so much you can do with these small parcels of land. Um, so like this ten acre piece uh would be good because somebody could be really creative. Um, they could do, you know, uh combination of uses. They could do mixed uses on the um, the voltage of Hudson. And then they could do the multifamily uh in between and they could do open space resources. So it, it is uh, you know, simpler uh for large developers to deal with large parcels of land than um just individual landowners who may or may not be developers uh to do projects.
I, I've just, I'm just not understanding why um large projects are better than, are like prioritized over smaller ones, um especially given the kind of downtown revitalization suggestions, like I, I guess, why, why isn't more of the downtown and the, the smaller kind of less, like than thinking like the, the bank, the old Bank of America or the old fire station? Um, like those kinds of smaller parcels that would probably benefit from more, you know, housing and mixed use. Um, that, I mean, that's kind of what has already been discussed by the downtown.
We have talked about that quite a bit. Um, but this bylaw does not allow us to mandate mixed use. Um, so we have to allow for multifamily. So the end result could potentially be just multifamily and nothing else. Uh, so there was concern about including um some of the parcels on Blake and Pier Street and the old fire station in this district. Um, fearing that there would be no mixed use. It would just be a whole multifamily and that's it. So in order to have the vibrant downtown, you really need to have the mixed use. So kind of the first floor retail with the apartments above.
Contiguous as well. So we had to make the property, it had to be contiguous. So we couldn't like mix and match properties all over town. We had to keep it. Was that, that's.
Five acres, I thought.
Yes. No, no sub-district can be smaller than five acres of land.
So that was a little bit of the challenge too, Carter, is keeping it contiguous, you know, finding a mix of property. Um, it was a, quite a discussion to come up with this one.
Okay. I mean, I, I just, my, my suggestion um would, would be that I, I, I think whether with this or in the future, I think a downtown revitalization would seem to require zoning changes that allow for more mixed use and multifamily housing in more of the, the downtown area. And to me, it would have made sense given we're required to do this anyways to, to have been done that all at once. But um, that, that was, that was just my comment on that.
Okay, great. Great feedback. Any other questions on this one?
My other question, I mean, the, the conversation about the um increasing from more than ten percent affordable housing seemed to, to have a lot of like suspicion. And I was wondering what the, if there's a reason why some people on the board seem reluctant to want more affordable housing.
Um, is any, did, is any board member want to respond to that?
Um, I mean, I think I'm the one that brought it up and I guess I wasn't sure if that was, um, thank you Carter for bringing that up. Um, Lori, I wasn't sure if that, when the RKG feasibility would, study would be done?
Tomorrow.
And so it'll be, you'll, it'll be in your hands tomorrow?
So they say.
Okay. And so if they determine that, you know, a higher percentage is affordable, is, is a reasonable project to ask for, would that be something that you intend to put in the warrant itself?
No, it's something that I intend to um have a conversation with you folks about. So I will provide you, so what I recommend is that we just continue the public hearing after tonight. After we go through all these articles. So then we continue it to the next um planning board meeting. And then we go over those results and then we decide whether we want to stay with the ten percent or whether we want to go above the ten percent and what amount that should be. So, yeah, I, I definitely do not plan on making that decision unilaterally.
Okay. So Carter, that was kind of why I was bringing it up because I had, this was the first time I was hearing about that being part of the, the discussion. And so I was trying to clarify where it was going to fit into our decision whether or not um before, move forward with the MBTA. So it doesn't sound like it's necessarily going to be on the warrant, but it is something that we would have information on. That's why.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. I, I was just, it, it seemed like there, there was like a, a pushback to it. And I was just kind of trying to figure out if there's any particular reason for that or if it was just a new, new information.
Yeah, more that, I think.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Carter. Okay, um Jason Cosow, Cosow, I'm not sure if I pronounced it right, but if you come on and say your name and address. Um, let's see, are you on here?
Hi, Jason.
Hello, Jason Cosow with the Ownership Group at three, three, three Southwest Cut Off.
Hi.
How are you? Thank you for the opportunity. Is there any possibility I could share my screen? I do have a few slides um that I would like to share.
Uh, what does it pertain to?
Um, specifically, uh obviously we're talking about the multifamily and uh the proposal at our, at the property at three, three, three Southwest Cut Off.
Um, okay. Does the board want to review slides? I'll leave it up to the board to decide.
I'm fine.
Yeah, okay. Are you able, do, are you able to do that, Jason, or are you having trouble?
Um, I'm not having trouble. I, I would have thought I would have seen a, a share screen button, but I'm not seeing a shared screen button. Um.
Oh, you're just in a, you're an attendee.
Okay.
Is something you want to send over and to the planning board and we could pop it up?
Um, sure, I can do that for sure.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna, um, we have a couple of other questions. So I'll move you out and take out a couple of other questions. And once that comes in, we'll pull that up and play back. Did you get it, Billy?
No, I didn't get it. I was just, I didn't quite hear what his residential address was.
Three, three, three Southwest Cut Off.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, and I apologize. The best email to send it is if it's on the agenda, I can check the agenda.
Um, Lori, do you want him to send it to your email address?
Sure. Or could we just make him a co-host so he can share his screen?
Um, oh, and what's the best way to do that?
Sorry, I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, we can bring him in as a panelist if we want.
Oh, okay, sure. I don't see how to do that for me. Do you have special powers?
So I see that three, three C Southwest looks like it's the urgent care building, not a residence.
That's the, do you remember? This is the Trammell Crow, the New England baseball that we, we've been talking about that was under consideration for inclusion in the overlay district.
Right. But is this for public comment for businesses?
It's pertaining to the MBTA overlay district.
Okay, did that work?
Yes, I, I think I got it going.
Okay, so I'm going to limit you to about five minutes, please.
Appreciate it. Madam Chair, Planning Board, Ms. Connors, thank you very much for the opportunity to share this. Uh, first, a little bit of background about myself. My name is Jason Cosow. Um, I've been with the Ownership Group at three, three Southwest Cut Off since we developed it into the baseball fields and the medical office building about ten, eleven years ago. Um, since then, I've, I've operated the facility. So, and I, and I do live locally uh with my wife and a couple of kids. So most of my time is spent probably between my house and North Borough. Just wanted to give you just a little bit of background about myself. Um, we had been in previously uh to, in front of the Planning Board to discuss the development of three hundred and fifteen units. This was in large part driven by uh our thought that Avalon would not be included in the district. Um, certainly seems that Avalon uh will be moved forward with in the district. So we have reassessed and uh understanding that the Planning Board is looking just to fill the balance of the Avalon acreage. Um, we would like to present a hundred ninety-five units as opposed to the three hundred and fifteen on a much smaller uh footprint. I think our property was considered earlier at twenty-seven acres. Um, and now we are considering the property to be at thirteen acres. So plus Avalon would get you the fifty acres. Um, and with that comes a hundred and ninety-five units. Some of the benefits uh to the town in North Borough with regards to this potential or proposed development. Uh, one, as we've talked about in the past, we, we, we would like to pursue a development agreement. Um, other sites for MBTA communities can build whatever they want if they do not have a development agreement. The development at three, three, three Southwest Cut Off would be pre-programmed and agreed upon per development agreement with the town. Uh, within that development agreement, we would call for no three-bedroom units to be included as part of that development plan. Uh, number two, uh location, our current location and Route twenty, uh or the current intersection and Route twenty are, are both capable of handling any additional traffic. The majority of the daily commuters from our uh proposed development would go onto Route nine and either go east of the four ninety-five corridor or west out to Worcester. Um, obviously with this, this proposed development would support the adjacent retail at North Borough Crossing. And uh likely this would certainly be the closest to the West Borough's MBTA commuter rail station. I know impact on schools has been um a, a hot button. Uh, we felt that by eliminating the three-bedroom apartments, we could better control the number of schoolchildren versus any unknown development. And with this a hundred ninety-five units given, uh excuse me, with this a hundred ninety-five units, given the unit count, we anticipate about twenty-three school-aged children to reside at the, at the development. Further, uh further benefit would be compliance with MBH uh communities. Um, and then the financial benefit is on the following slide. Um, we've presented some of these numbers in the past. Uh, obviously the permit fees and public works fees are, are one-time uh assessed fees. Uh, annual real estate taxes, we estimate would go up to about six hundred and eighty-two thousand. Uh, they're currently at about eighty-four thousand dollars a year. And you can see the impact that those annual taxes would have on the number of kids at our development versus, say, an Avalon. I know you mentioned TCR, uh Trammell Crow Residential. Uh, they're the group that would help, uh, they would, they would develop this. We are their partner in this. Um, so they are professional. Uh, they've worked on um development agreements in other communities. Uh, quite frankly, with regards to this MBTA communities, uh so they're well-versed in uh writing, creating and developing a development agreement. Um, even under this legislation. They've also done a number of local projects in Massachusetts, um scattered throughout. Again, three, three, three Southwest Cut Off, a hundred ninety-five units. The general demographic and the product that Trammell Crow uh develops seeks out empty nesters and local downsizers, young working professionals, commuters to Worcester, Boston surrounding areas. And their amenity package uh certainly supports that with elevator clubhouse, conference rooms, heated pools, coffee bar and lounge, dog spot and fitness spot, or fitness center. Um, some comparable properties, um we probably most would be compared to the Quinn thirty-five in Shrewsbury. That's adjacent to the Whole Foods and the Old Spags. Uh, they have a slightly larger unit count at two hundred and fifty, but uh, but the average square foot per unit is about the same. They also have a similar mix of Studio One and two bedrooms. As I mentioned before, we will have, we won't have any three bedrooms. They're ten percent affordable and they have about thirty schoolchildren that come out of those two hundred and fifty units. And again, their, their amenities are driven towards that demographic of working professional. The Avalon, we just, we've said is not a good comparable. They almost have double the number of units. The average square footage per unit is thirty-eight percent greater. That's driven by the number of two bedrooms and townhouses that they have. Also, they have ninety-three bedroom units. It's a forty B property with twenty-five percent affordable units and a hundred and forty schoolchildren come from that development. Just a quick comparison, um, just a, oops.
Right, you're about out of time, so um.
I appreciate it. This is our, this is the last slide. So that's it. Um, so this is just a quick comparison of those uh other projects. Obviously ours is a hundred and ninety-five units versus Quinn at two hundred and fifty, Avalon at three eighty-two. And then just a, a unit mix breakdown. Uh, we certainly wanted to get rid of the three bedrooms to help control the schoolchildren and um, and I, I, I think we did. Um.
Okay, great. If you could email this to the Planning Board, um email, that would be great. And then everyone have a chance to review in depth. But um I appreciate you sharing. Thanks so much.
I appreciate the time.
No problem. Okay, next we have um Patrick F. I'm going to bring you in. Just your name and address, please. Hi, Patrick. Oops, I can't hear you yet.
No, you can't hear me or you can?
Yeah, oh, yes, we can. Yep.
Patrick French, uh one-one-two Cedar Hill Road. Um, I guess I, I, I support the proposal, um, but it, you know, I guess my, my opinion is it, it probably could go further downtown, right? Like there probably isn't going to be a lot of development as a result of what's been zoned downtown and, you know, zoning more. Probably in the long run would, would have been better, but that, but I still think it's, we have to start somewhere. So, you know, I still support what's, what's been proposed. It's interesting because somebody else made a comment earlier, kind of similarly of like, you know, why not more and stuff like that? And uh I know why some, why some folks on the board don't want to do more and that's, that's, that's fair enough. But I wonder, I guess my question is, um, if for some reason, and I hate to jinx it, but come town meeting, if something goes wrong and, and, and folks, this doesn't work out, like, is there a mechanism? Because I'm, this is my first time paying attention and going to, potentially going to a town meeting and stuff, so I'm learning. Is there a way we find out? Like, are people not liking this because we didn't do enough downtown? Like that we didn't zone enough downtown? Like if this, if it doesn't work out, is there, do we figure that out after the fact? Or when, when do we start getting the pulse of, oops, we pulled back too much?
So um, that's a good concern, Patrick. Thanks for bringing that up. I think we, if for some reason this does not pass a town meeting, I think we get another, if we have a, I, is there a fall town meeting? Is that definite with the fire station? I, is there a fall town meeting, is that definite with the fire station? Okay, so there is an opportunity at a fall town meeting that if we need to regroup and rethink it, um, we sort of have that as a safety net in my mind. I don't know if any other board members, or Lori, you have a comment on your view on that?
Yeah, I, I think that's, uh, that's one of the major motivations of going forward with the spring town meeting. Is it would give us another opportunity if it doesn't, if it doesn't, uh, go well. Um, because we have to comply by December thirty-first of this year. Um, so, I mean, ideally, we'd all like to see it pass on the first run. I think this is a super conservative because the fear is that if we're more aggressive, it won't pass. Um, but I know what we've been discussing over the last few meetings is that if it does pass and then we decide that we want to go further, then it'll be much easier to add parcels later than it will be to be too aggressive to start and have it fail at town meeting because of excess aggressiveness.
No, I appreciate that, and I, I, I agree, I think, you know, go, starting somewhere and being a little conservative is fine. My specific question was, if it fails, and I, I'm sorry that I'm asking this because we all want it to pass. How, do we know, do we, how do we find out why? Did the majority vote against because we didn't zone enough downtown?
Um, so Patrick, you, it sounds like you haven't been to a town meeting yet, but we will absolutely know why by the end of the night.
Okay, 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 I look, I look forward to experiencing my first.
Millie, did you have something there?
No, I was gonna say the same thing, I'm sure they'll let us know at town meeting.
Yep.
Okay, okay, I appreciate it, thank you very much for taking my question.
No, no problem, thank you. Alright, we have a couple more questions, um, let's see, we have a couple more returning, um, Rick. Leaf, I'll bring you back in. Hi, Rick, was this your hand up from before or a new question? Oops, you're muted, maybe it was, was this a leftover or new?
Another comment.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, this have to do with the affordability component that was talked about, the ten percent, maybe fifteen percent. As you know, um, I'm also involved, uh, with the North Borough Affordable Housing Corporation, and I'm just speaking now on behalf of myself, not on behalf of the corporation here, but, um, you know, having a ten percent requirement does nothing more than make sure that all of the market rate units that get built as part of this don't drop us below the ten percent. But if we can, if it turns out it's financially viable that these builders can do something to provide more than ten percent, it's a way to get us ahead of the game and offset other market rate units that are gonna be built outside of whatever happens here. So I would certainly urge you guys, if you can, put a fifteen percent affordability factor in there. To do that, just from the standpoint of maintaining, um, our ability to stay ahead of the ten percent requirement, and also, as we've talked about, there's a need, you know, for municipal employees, teachers, uh, people who live in town, our children growing up, to find more affordable housing over time, so not only does it make sense to build affordable housing to keep us above the ten percent threshold, but there is a need for people in town to be able to afford housing at this level also. So for both reasons, if it is possible to expand that from ten percent to fifteen, I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, good comments, thanks, Rick. Okay, a couple more questions, um, Carter Brandon. Bring me back in, was, was your hand up again or from before?
Well, I think that was from before, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, it's tough to tell, and then Scott Rogers. Scott, is this a leftover or a new one?
A new question, yeah, thanks, and, and, and it's probably a result of having further discussion about seventy-seven Main and third, third, three thirty-three Southwest Cut Off. I know in your previous board meetings, you've talked about what to include or not include in, in this district. Um, would it be good to go through some of those reasons to help the public understand the properties that were included or were not included?
Sure, so, thanks for that, bringing that up. So for board members, if you were to think back to our conversations, um, you know, over time, does anything stand out that would be helpful to highlight? For the public in terms of what we looked at, didn't look at, I think, in my view, a lot of it came, we had a lot of conversations about the school system, overburdening the schools, making sure we did this in a stepped, one step at a time. Any other comments or thoughts on our thought process that would be helpful? Bill, you have something?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with what you said, right, uh, we were concerned about having a developer come in right away and, and, you know, start developing a property right away. We actually had two properties that came in, um, one on Hudson Street, and then the one that, that you just saw at Southwest Cut Off that were potential properties. But, a-again, the concern comes in that, you know, if we overburden and not go through this in a slow, uh, meticulous manner, um, that, that we could really cause more harm to the town than, than good.
Any other comment, traffic, we, we thought a lot about traffic, especially downtown. Suitability of the property, it had to be contiguous, we had to hit a lot of notes, we also had to consider wetlands, we, you know, we had to be mindful of needing to subtract out land that was not buildable. Uh, it was a little bit of a, of a puzzle in some cases, I felt like. I don't know, any other board members, Amy or Anthony or Millie, thoughts on your thought process?
I'd say that, both of what you said pretty much summarizes it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we did want to have some of the, you know, consider what the options were and where they were, uh, and downtown being a, a, a piece of it, I think is an important um, part of the discussion that we added in, mixed use and, and, um, residential and business.
Yeah, I mean, for me downtown, uh, Lori, obviously it presented some different grants that would be helpful for us to get, and I think that's a huge incentive. Um, I always struggle with what comes first, the housing or economic development. I wish we, I still wish we had some sort of infrastructure for an economic development committee or resource or someone to really help the businesses that we have. Um, so I personally struggle a little bit with that philosophy, but, um, in, in terms of the properties, um, it seemed like the least risky in my mind, for, for the board members. We kind of, I think we thought a lot about risk and risk versus reward. So how could we get those grants without overburdening the town, without, you know, kind of stepping our toes in the water a little bit? So hopefully that helps everybody. Um, we have one last question here, and then we're gonna move on to the next one, I have Lisa Micali, Lisa, I'm gonna bring you in.
Hi there, Lisa Micali, thirteen Maple Street. I'm, I'm a little confused just about the affordable housing aspect of it. Because I hear on one hand that it's, um, you know, we all want to be able to have affordable housing, certainly, and, and better for the people who are, you know, struggling, and certainly for our, um, you know, people who do work for our town, but I'm confused because I thought that there was a different type of threshold that made it available to the person for, to getting into affordable housing. Um, I thought that the threshold was that you had to make a certain income, but you, but I you didn't have a, you didn't have a house, you didn't, you didn't have an existing house, I may be wrong, but I thought that you had to be, uh, it was, it was based on need, and the greater need started with no housing or, um, well, we have, basically, it was no housing and it was open to the, open to the entire state, it wasn't just open to the town. Am I wrong about that?
Okay, Lori, looks like you have an answer for that one.
Yeah, um, so in order to meet the affordable housing threshold, uh, you have to qualify as low income, um, so you don't have to be homeless. Um, you just have to qualify, so you could be a renter, um, or you could, uh, you know, live with somebody else, and, you know, like a parent or, um, and so you just have to, to meet the affordability threshold, which is an annual income based on, uh, household size. Um, and then they also have certain parameters, uh, having to do with how much savings you have, like how many assets you have. Um, but that's all defined by the state, so the town isn't, uh, defining what those thresholds are.
So, but if the state then decides and, and it, isn't the most needy come first, or isn't it like a you know, everybody puts their name in and they have to be, they have to be qualified by the most need first?
Um, it, it depends on what type of housing they're building. Uh, so that if they're, uh, targeting the eighty percent affordability threshold, um, then you just have to apply, so, uh, oftentimes, there's a lottery. So you would be competing, uh, particularly for ownership units, uh, so you put your name in your, in the ring, so um, you submit an application and then, uh, the manager will income-qualify everybody. Um, and then it goes into a hat and they pick out the name, um, and that's the person who gets the unit. Uh, rentals, uh, are dealt with differently, and so it all depends on what, how, how they're doing the housing. So Avalon, um, you know, when a unit becomes available, they affirmatively market the unit. They income-qualify people, and then, uh, that's probably a first-come, first-served basis. So it's, it's, you know, like how people rent an apartment. It's, the situation isn't all that different.
Alright, but it is, it is including all of the state, though, it's not just North Borough.
No, not necessarily. So Avalon, there, what you're talking about is you're talking about housing authority properties. So that's super, super low income, so you apply for, um, a super low-income unit through the housing authority, it's like a statewide system, and then they have a waiting list. But that's not what we're talking about here. This would just be low income, so it's eighty percent the median. Um, the housing authority is dealing with very low-income people, so like, I think thirty to fifty percent of the median. So much lower income folks.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, and Rick, I I figured you'd have your hand up on this one, Rick.
Yeah, just, just one other comment, um, for units, I think it's at least four units or more, the town can specify local preference of at least fifty percent of the units can be local preference. That means that if people who live or work or have children in the North Borough school system are interested in one of these affordable units, uh, and they qualify on income, usually it's at eighty percent of median income, which is fairly substantial in the North Borough area, then all the local applicants are put in one bucket, and all those names are drawn first to fill the number of units that are available on local preference. And then all of the people in the local bucket who weren't chose are put in the general bucket and they're available again for selection in the lottery, for the balance of the units. So, uh, local preference is something that we always, uh, wanna do for building in North Borough, and every project that I've been involved with the housing corporation has had a, for the, uh, four-unit or more projects have had local preference, and we put at least half, if not more, uh, than half of North Borough people in there, so for these projects, non-housing authority projects, there is an ability to make sure that a significant portion of people in the North Borough area that want to get in the lottery do get selected.
Oh, that's great to know, thanks for sharing that.
And just to echo that, that, that afford, um, that residency preference was written into the bylaw. Um, so North Borough residents would be defined as people who currently live in the town of North Borough, North Borough, as well as current employees of the town or a business establishment located in North Borough or household with children attending the North Borough South Pole Regional School District.
That's great. Okay, thanks for sharing that, Rick, and bring that forward. Okay, why don't we then, um, move on to the next one? Oh, shoot, I'm sorry, um, we had some emails come in, too. I just want to make sure to recognize the ones that came in, so, we had an email come in from Anna Sivideo at twenty-six Stratton Way. Um, she asked about cutting the number of acres zoned downtown to two for thirty units, she's concerned about, um, that perhaps the school doesn't have the highest population, but resources for IEPs, five oh fours are extremely drained. She was concerned about classroom size, the draw for the town is the school system, and she, and just wanted to express her concern about the school possibly suffering with the addition of housing. We have, um, an email from Eman Ben Savengo. Um, let's see, he is in full support of the MBTA communities and our bold implementation. Feels like housing is really important in the state, um, this enactment of this law in North Borough is a chance to participate in our, in our contribution to solving the problem, um, helping with prosperity, vibrance. Let's see, he and his family have lived here for three and a half years, and I'm sorry, his address is one fourteen Hudson Street for the minutes. Um, he thought it'd be better than having gas stations overshadowing the town, it could be a place for residents to walk and shop and um, it's a great chance for foot traffic to flourish, our economy. Um, let's see. Also, considering Southwest Cut Off, and, oh, this is for a different one, but for the, for the bylaw on Southwest Cut Off is an overlay zoning district, also want to express support for that. Um, encourage the board to allow new housing to be built downtown via zoning overlay there as well. Um, let's see. I think that gets the gist of, actually, we should not, non-compliance of the law should not be considered. Middle compliance is satisfactory, bold compliance should be our aim, so that was from Eman. Did I miss anybody that sent in a message about, I'm trying to look through emails?
Fran reiterated the comments.
Okay, did Fran send one in for, um, MBTA, or she did one for the bylaws, I saw that?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think she did one specifically for MBTA.
Okay, I didn't see that, okay, so I think that captures all the feedback there, um, so then with that, um, we can move forward to the next one.
And Carrie, I'm gonna defer to you.
Okay, so, this zoning bylaw proposes the elimination of use variances. And, um, what use variances are, is it gives the ZBA, and actually, I, I won't read each bullet here, but it gives ZBA the ability to allow for use that's not otherwise included in our bylaws. Um, a little bit of the rationale behind not granting use variances going forward is because oftentimes use variances conflict with the community's master plan, so it's very difficult to get the zoning that you want when you allow for these exceptions. Um, and also, another, another component of this is really that the people who live in the town and go to town meeting, uh, would consider the legislative body should really be the body that decides on what uses we want in the town. So, we circumvent that authority when we give the authority over to a different board. Um, it's a, a five-member appointed board to decide on our behalf to allow for uses. Whereas, and a different approach could actually be, if we do have a need for those uses, we could, we should put it in the bylaws, go through the process like this public hearing tonight, give people in the community a chance to comment, give their feedback, give everybody a chance to vote on it, and say collectively as a community, we want this use in our town, let's put it in the bylaws. Versus having a smaller group decide, it wasn't in the bylaws, but we're going to allow for it anyway. So I, in my, um, in presentation of this to the board, and in discussing it as a board, um, I think we agreed that it would be a good idea to remove use variances from our bylaws. Towns in Massachusetts, not all towns and cities in towns in Massachusetts allow for it. Um, you actually have to have a bylaw that allows for use variances, uh, specifically in order to do this. Um, otherwise, your town does not allow use variances, which many have started to, uh, move away from use variances, is sort of an antiquated way for, um, allocating uses in town. Additional comments from the board, did I miss anything, comments or questions from the board? Okay, comments or questions from the public? I see Scott. Hey Scott, just name and address.
Yeah, thanks again, Scott Rogers, twenty-six Tom Drive. I guess, um, if, uh, the removal of use variances kind of removes some flexibility for good ideas. I think, um, Chairman, uh, Chair of the Zoning Board Appeals kind of said, you know, it was a tool in a toolbox. If use variances are not allowed. And I think we have it that only explicitly listed loose, the uses are then allowed. Any, any use in the used table is prohibited, right, in terms of the way our bylaws are structured. If someone came to the town with a really good item for downtown revitalization, what then is the path? And how long would it take to get that really good use, a really good idea developed or allowed and then cleared for implementation?
That's a good question, Scott. Use variances aren't really for really good ideas. It's for a hardship. So you actually are supposed to show specific criteria, which consists of there's either a hardship unique to your lot that has to do with either soil, topography, or shape of your property. You have to show um what's the second hardship down? Help me out, gang. That was the first one. You have to hit three areas of your hardship.
Uh, was it um dimensional? No, nevermind.
It's soil, topography.
Yes, yeah.
Shape of the lot. And then you, so you have to prove one of those three.
Yep.
Uh, then you also have to demonstrate that it's not going to be a significant hardship to the to the neighborhood. And then the third, I think, is um that it doesn't derogate from the purposes of the zoning bylaw. Is that right, Bob? Yeah.
Okay, so it's not, you couldn't, you're technically not supposed to come and say, I have a really good idea and I need to use variance. You're supposed to have a significant hardship that you can prove. And actually, if you're going to say it's about the soil, you need to bring soil samples. You can't just, so I think we've been applying the bylaw a little bit loosely over time, which is also um a risk. And um, it's, it's not really a tool for allowing for good ideas that you forgot about in your bylaws. And then if someone does have a good idea, um, you know, unfortunately or not, it should go through the correct process of going to town meeting, letting a public hearing, so you and everybody else can comment on it, and then allowing people to vote for it. So I hope that clarifies a little bit.
So, no, so if you could go into that detail of what would be the steps? And how long would it take to get a new use listed?
So similar to this, you'd go through the whole bylaw process. Oh, Amy, did you have something there?
That I was gonna say, we have to do it every year. So if you're a resident and you want to bring a new use forward, you have to go through what the planning board does every year. Bring it to the planning board and then go through the public hearing process. Have it vetted.
Laurie, you have something on that one?
Um, yeah, you could also, you don't necessarily have to um start with the planning board. You could submit a petition article to the Board of Selectmen and you could have that signed by, I think it's ten registered voters. Um, and then the Board of Selectmen would forward that to the planning board and the planning board is required to hold the public hearing for you. And um, and then make the recommendation at the annual meeting, town meeting.
Or a special town meeting, right?
It could be a special town meeting as well.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna bring up was, was you could always do a special town meeting, right? That's, you know, we've got one coming up in the fall. Um, there was actually one that was talked about potentially happening this month. Um, and that was a month out from the time we were talking about it to the time they were potentially looking to perform it. So, you know, there, there are lots of, lots of other options.
So I'm hearing six to eighteen months, something like that, depending on where in the cycle we hit it. If we were, if a, if an idea was proposed about now, when the, the board is considering new bylaws, it would then, you know, potentially be in place for town meetings. So that would be something measured in just a few months.
It's a special town meeting. It's like forty-five days.
It has to be forty-five days?
I'm guessing forty-five days, but it wasn't long.
So the petition article has to be submitted before the warrant is closed. And then the planning board would have to immediately schedule the public hearing. So uh, we have to advertise a minimum of fourteen days in advance and it has to be twice in the newspaper. So really the turnaround time from submission to the start of the public hearing is about a month.
Okay, and, and, and the reason I'm asking, right, is our, our current focus on downtown revitalization, right? How do we get businesses to come into our empty storefronts? And how to take some of the abandoned properties? And, and so I'm looking for ways to incentivize that development rather than discourage it. And, and so your explanation on use variances and that, they you know, apparently are not player, you know, it does, it doesn't play into that. Um, I'd be looking in, in future years for creative ideas from the planning board on how to incentivize great development ideas rather than discouraging in some cases. And so if, if um, in the next cycle, you can think about bylaw changes that would help encourage development, I think that would be very well received.
Well, is there, let me ask you, is there a use that you think is missing from downtown that you've noticed? That would be helpful to know.
Oh, my, myself, I've, you know, in years past, I've had my hypotheticals, right? I, I've talked about uh bacon soap business in, in previous writing about rendering fat, you know, what we were prohibited, prohibited activities, you know, downtown in terms of fat revenue. Those were all hypothetical kind of silly ideas, but it's, so no, no, personally, I'm not a developer. I'm just looking for ways to be more business friendly uh in Northborough and if we can find ways to encourage it. A lot of folks in looking at the use variance prohibition will read that as a discouragement. So I think explaining that we wouldn't have been able, shouldn't have been able to do use variances anyway will be important at town meeting to get kind of that off the table if you want to, you know, um, explicitly, you know, give that, which now it'll help. Um, explain that it, in this case, in the use variance, it neither encourages nor discourages business.
Good feedback. Amy, you have something there?
Yeah, I think this whole discussion started a couple of years ago. We attended a course in economic development in your downtown. And after you go through a downtown revitalization, you know, there should be bylaws set up for the type of businesses you want to see downtown and the type of downtown, I'm not saying to discourage certain businesses, but the town is supposed to come up with a plan. And the class actually said, as long as you have a use variance, you may never get to the point you're trying to get to. Because there's always a way to override what your, what your end goal is.
But you just said, you just said that use variances don't do that. So I guess it's not even, that's not even a consideration.
That was specifically in the course, like use variances do. Um, it, it doesn't allow you to reach your vision because there's always an exception model versus agreeing, collectively agreeing to a plan. So say you brought up, hey, let's come up with some great ideas. So we could come up with all the great ideas in the world and of what we want downtown to look like. But for as long as use variances exist, the exceptions um, prevent that from happening. And that's really what this course talked about and sort of the original genesis of um, wanting to change this bylaw a couple of years ago in the first place.
But you said that only the exceptions only happen for soil, topography and other things. So it, it doesn't sound to me like it is uh open season if you keep it in there.
Well, if you go back in history, there are some cases where um, we haven't looked at those things. So um, if we haven't been applying the criteria correctly, then that's a very dangerous thing to have. Because then it does allow for uses that don't meet the hardships but are allowed anyway. So that's also been another problem. Glad you brought that up.
Yeah, so I think that'll, you know, be good to have that explanation at town meeting. And then um yeah, hopefully then out of the studies that are happening with revitalization, there's put forward to you all a list of encouraged uses for the next cycle.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great thought. Thanks so much.
We actually added a couple this year. The co-working space and the maker space.
Okay, I have a couple more comments here. Oh, sorry.
Quick, that's okay. Um, Laurie, I thought we had uh for, was it for the MBTA communities that we had um suggested that they had the ability to add an additional floor if they were doing um multi-use? I didn't see that in your presentation.
Yeah, so uh it, there is an incentive into the bylaw that does allow a, a greater development potential, greater height. If you're doing um the mixed use, particularly in the downtown area. So if you're just doing a straight multifamily, the maximum height you can get is thirty-five feet. But if you agree to do the mixed use, so it could be horizontal or vertical, then you're able to go up to forty-five feet.
Yeah, so I think to, to Scott's point, right, that's sort of thinking outside the box, right, of what the planning board has always done in the past. So I just wanted to, to make sure we highlight that, that we are trying to think of other ways to you know, incentivize and, and get business in as well as, you know, it's not just getting housing.
Um, Owen, I don't know if you saw this, I'm getting some feedback that the streaming, YouTube streaming has stopped. I'm not sure if you see that on your end as well.
Yeah, I can definitely check it out.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, um, Marshall Gould, I'm going to bring you in here. Just your name and address. Hey, Marshall.
Marshall Gould, a forty-one West Street. And I want to talk about this concept of saying no more use variances. And I know it's been brought to town meeting on more than one occasion before and it's been rejected. And there have been some questions asked that I don't think have been satisfactorily answered. And and the first one is what problems have been created by the variance process that are not good for the town of Northborough? Um, or that are detrimental in any way to the town of Northborough or the district in which it's located. And I think when this question was asked at prior town meetings, um, a member or maybe even two members of the zoning board talked about the number of use, of, in fact, variances that were granted and how many were actually use variances, and they were a very small number. People think of use variances, and I think the example that has been used by this planning board, I know by Amy has brought up that a seminar said Northborough Crossing had so many variances, it should never have been allowed. Um, and in hindsight, that's all good, but with with business, there are two factors. You have to consider both business coming in or already here, and then you have to consider residents who are already here. Now, things to consider are that your bylaw has already been changed. It used to say that if you wanted to expand a previously existing, lawfully existing, non-conforming use, the statute in Massachusetts says it cannot be substantially more detrimental than what is there now. In the case of the change that was made to the bylaw, it has to be less detrimental than exists now. That makes it harder for existing business owners who want to expand their businesses. And they may need a variance in order to do that. And I think that's an important consideration. I'll run down the other things that I have.
Can I quickly, oh wait, hold on, Marshall. Amy wants to respond.
Before I forget, I just wanna, because you spoke of what I said, so I just wanted to speak to that before I forget. But um, I never said that Northborough Crossing got so many variances that it never should have been allowed. I, I probably said that Northborough Crossing was the largest use variance ever allowed in the state of Massachusetts. But I didn't say anything about so many variances because I don't even know how many variances it had. I know it was the biggest use variance allowed in the state of Massachusetts. But I, I never said it shouldn't have been allowed. It was up to the town to decide whether it should be allowed. But I, I definitely didn't put my personal opinion out there.
Okay, so the second thing, I, I still want to go back. The biggest issue is why the change, what problems have been created? And the statute specifically sets forth for zoning board of appeals and allows them to issue uh, variances unless the town votes no. It's brought forward to the town, I believe, on at least two occasions within the last number of, short number of years, less than five years, I believe. And it's been rejected by the voters both times. That's something we need to consider. So obviously there's a push for this and what negativity has been caused by variances that has still not been explained to the voters. I'll just make the points and then we can talk or not talk about them. Um, there are times where people apply for variances for uses that are either not currently written or even considered in the bylaws. Or in the case of private homeowners, sometimes they look for use variances where they have a residence and they want to put a certain type of business in their existing home. And it might be a very small use. Might be somebody wanting to do a small accounting for a small number of clients or a dog grooming business or who knows what. People like this, they're unlikely to go to a town meeting for a zone change. And you, you want the use to continue to be roughly what it is. And the zoning board is experienced, much like the planning board is experienced.
Marshall, let me ask you, in the case of a home use, like you brought that up, what soil, topography or shape hardship exists in that case? That it would hit the criteria of a use variance?
It, it might be that they are limited, but there.
No, no, no. What soil, shape or topography, what criteria does that hit? In the use variance criteria? See, that's the problem. That's the exact problem with this bylaw is we make these wishy-washy workarounds.
Carrie, if I could just finish the points.
Please.
There used to be years ago, many zoning boards, not Northborough alone, but many throughout the state. And lawyers used to talk about it at conferences, the concept of no harm, no foul, particularly in the case of what I just talked about, of a small homeowner wanting to do.
Exactly why we can't do this.
Carrie, could I please? So you're saying that if somebody wants to room dogs in their basement or in the back of their home, or if they want to do some accounting and have customers coming to their home, they have to go to town meeting and they have to get the zone changed?
But it has to, if it wants to fit use variance criteria, tell me the criteria that fits. I'm just asking if if that's the case you're bringing, if that's the use case, what soil, shape or topography criteria does that example fit? That's why, that's the problem with this bylaw.
In some, there might be cases where they may want to do something and there might be ledge or something. But you're right, in many of these real small cases, you don't have those. But I'm saying what variance has been granted in the town that has created a problem for residents?
Okay, I'll give you one.
Okay, so.
We had a two, how many years do we have a lawsuit with STERIS that started with a variance? How about one Liman Street? I think that's in court. The, the, the litigation risk for, for misallocating or improperly allocating use variances is enormous. Those are examples. Amy, you have something?
Yeah, I also wanted to point out, can I just point out one thing?
Hold on one second, please. Amy's, Amy's responding to something.
Okay.
Then um, accounting office inside a person's home is a home occupation and that's allowed. A professional office within a home wouldn't even need a use variance. Something that's small is already allowed in the home occupation bylaw.
Okay, so who's to determine one that's small?
Well, any professional office, whether it's, it's right in the bylaw. I'd have to. I think there's a determination, sorry, sorry. I think there is about the amount of square footage that it takes up or the, the, the space, I thought. We'll have to open that up to the page.
Oh, Bob, do you know offhand for home occupation? It's okay if you don't.
Um, it may be a limit. I'm not going to bust into the weeds for this because you guys are way into the weeds on this. Need to think five and ten thousand feet.
Yeah, yeah.
So if I could just finish what I wanted to say on this.
Sure.
I still don't see where there has been a problem. Now, let me also say what we're trying to do is to do a service for the town, but what service are we doing? If, because I know that none of you here are lawyers that are representing clients. But think about how many cases you have had come to Northborough for special permits or variances. They are drastically reduced. And part of that is the town is viewed as very business unfriendly. If somebody tries to get zoning for a particular use in a particular, excuse me, in a particular area, that's spot zoning. You make it sound like it's very simple to do. Spot zoning is not something that is often allowed. In fact, the Attorney General could very easily turn it down. So businesses coming in are not likely to apply for. could very easily turn it down. So businesses coming in are not likely to apply for spot zoning in lieu of a variance, simply because of the fact, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of money, and there are other places they could go other than Northborough and get some of what they want, whereas in Northborough, you're saying, go. And I hear what you're saying, Carrie, and I hope you'll hear what I'm saying. You have to trust the ZBA, much like you trust the planning board, to enforce their rules. And part of those rules give a benefit to the town. If you rezone, much like we just talked about with three A, if you rezone property for apartments, they can immediately come in and build those apartments. They don't have to go through the development agreement with you if you don't already have one in advance on that site. Now, when you come to a variance, you're leaving out some of the important parts of a variance. The permit granting authority can impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations of time and use, including continued existence of structures, but excluding any condition, safeguard, or limitation based upon continued ownership of the land. Now, some of those things have been used by the planning board with special permits. The zoning board has also used these. And I think you're not giving enough credit to the zoning board, and that's why people at town meeting ask what problems have been created by the variance in this town that you are looking not once and not twice, but now the third time in a short period of time, to get that put into the bylaw. And I think people need to know this.
Marshall, so I will say, the people brought up at the last town meeting, one detriment to the town was the use variance granted at One Liman, and I know you represented that applicant. So I don't think it's fair for you to come forward and ask a question like that when you know full well that One Liman Street had, was presented as having detriment to the residents in that area.
The court has decided already on that.
But you, I mean, you asked what would cause detriment, and it caused detriment to go to court about that, to have residents. You know, that was what, you asked what was brought up. That was brought up at the last town meeting.
And the resident lost the case because they were alleging the detriment was a groundwater issue. And, and so I'm just telling you, I think you're taking away power given to the zoning board of appeals by the legislature in Massachusetts. I know you're saying some towns are doing away with those. But I'm saying, why should Northborough remove powers from the ZBA? Nobody is asking to remove powers from the planning board. And I'm saying, what has caused a problem, and I think it should be presented to the town, what it is. You're bringing up One Liman. Most people don't think that's a problem at all. There was one abutter who thought it was a problem, because that abutter lives on the corner of where a commercial, industrial rather, and a residential zone exist. Spot zoning represents a much bigger problem. So I'm just saying to you, I, I think if you're going to go to town meeting, I think the rationale for why this is being proposed should be given. When has it been a problem to the town? And don't cite one case where the neighbor who lives next door doesn't want it. Let's put it to where something has gone forward, and it's presented a problem to the town.
Okay, that's a good point. I appreciate your passion.
And the last thing I just wanted to say is, you know, when you go on a particular bylaw to the town several times, and it's been turned down, there has to be more than just, why should we allow it? We, you know, if everybody wants to do that, it's not a good idea. And to think that somebody going to the town meeting for a zone change is a simple and easy process, what happens is, for the residents who get most of the variance, it's because they want to do something at their house.
That's not the criteria. All right. We, I agree, I get your point. You're making a good one. We should clarify.
You're making those, and the reason you had people vote against you is people heard that. You're saying, oh, they need the criteria, but those people aren't going to vote for this if they think that they might need it in their homes or something, and then they can't get it. So I think you're being blind if you're not listening to what I'm saying, but more importantly, what the voters were saying at the last meeting. I respect everything you are doing. I understand, and I think cogent arguments can be made on both sides. But I don't think you should respond by pointing out one property where one abutter appealed. That's all I'm saying, okay?
All right. Thanks for the feedback.
All right.
Good night. Okay, um, I'm going to pull in Fran Baxteran. Hi, Fran, just your name and address.
Hi, thank you, Carrie. Fran Baxteran, seventy six Cedar Hill Road. Just real quick, um, on this Warren article, just to clarify, if appropriately applied, a use variance is unique to the property that is on the application, is that correct? I should say that is correct, right?
Unique to the other property, properties, surrounding properties?
No, that's me property. No, so if, if a certain property applicant comes before the zoning board, applies for a use variance, and it is granted, it is specific to that property.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, if we do away with the use variance, and it, it just doesn't exist, and somebody then goes through the process of either special town meeting, or citizen petition, whatever, and they get through the process eighteen months later, the use that they wanted on their little piece of property is now going to be allowed in that entire district, is that correct? Either by right or special permit, right?
No, the variance is specific to the land, so it wouldn't be.
We're doing away with the variance.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you've applied for a, you went through the town meeting, and you put it in a, in a district. So yes, in the district.
Right, so now that use that might not have been a deterrent on one piece of property is now going to be allowed in the whole district. I mean, that would be, I guess, one of the rationales for, if appropriately used, there's value to it.
But Fran, I will just say, I get what you're saying, but the, the difference that I'm saying is that that went through the legislative body, and as a legislative body, everybody got the chance to speak to that and vote on that, and it wasn't just one application and five people. It was the, as a town, as a legislative body, that was the process, which the Attorney General has deemed as the correct process to go through for your zoning is to have a public hearing process, a place for people to comment. So even though if, whether it goes to the whole district, that's, that's okay, because it went through the process of everyone in town having the chance to say, yes, we want that use. Not a single application where five people said, oh, I know it's not on the use table, but we're going to let this one go.
Well, so I, I mean, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is that the potential, there's a greater risk of assumed harm to the community if it's allowed throughout the district. I mean, just something silly, I'll, I won't do as silly as what Scott Rogers did. But there was somebody on Milk Parcs that came and got a use variance for a home personal service for massage therapy. It's not an allowed use in residential zone. Correctly or incorrectly, the zoning board of appeals granted that use variance. If that use variance hadn't existed, and this person then went through the process, massage therapy, home personal services would have to then be allowed in all of whatever residential zone. So I'm just saying, and I'm not, I'm not going to argue it one way or the other, I'm just pointing out that that is a potential downside. The last thing I will just say is that if the, if the feeling or the, the thought is that the tool is being used incorrectly, you don't get rid of the tool, you educate the people on how to use it more correctly as it was intended, so that you have that option, as opposed to throwing it out, throwing it out of the toolbox when it may come in handy someday. Maybe it never will, but it may come in handy someday. And that's all. And the rest can be at town meeting. I just wanted to.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, Fran. And I know, um, I guess the thing with that is if we say, all right, let's train everybody so that we apply the criteria, then it sounds to me like the things people want to use it for, we could no longer use it for. So that massage parlor, that, um, dog, the, the accounting in the basement, or whatever, it sounds, it sounds like what people want to use it for isn't actually what the true use variance criteria would allow for. So, I don't know, maybe there's a different way where we could, I, I mean, I hear the point, like, well, you don't want to wait for eighteen months to get something through, and we want to allow it to be business friendly. But for some reason, use variance piece, it just, like, we, we talk out of both sides of our mouths, not you or me personally, but just like, yeah.
Right. Well, I will say that, last thing, if it shouldn't be applied for things that we want, then let's find out how it should be applied and use it in that way, not get rid of it. But use it in that way with the understanding that whether it's five people elected to the planning board, or five people appointed on the zoning board, our interpretation and perception of what the bylaws read, how they read, can be different. It doesn't mean they're right or wrong, they can be different. And that's why there's an appeal process to go through, whether it's a for or against. So again, the tool has value, and if we have concerns that it's not being used correctly, let's find out exactly how it should be used and use it more carefully.
Okay. Great feedback, Fran, thanks. Okay, I have two more comments, and we'll move on from here. I have Rick Leaf. Rick, if you want your name and address.
Yeah, Rick Leaf, Thirty Wiles Farm Road. I was a past member of the planning board, and we had discussed this also when I was a member of the planning board. Um, I guess, one question, where did the zoning board of appeals come down in this Warren article? Are they going to support this on the floor of town meeting or not?
It, so we did actually invite the ZBA to join us at our last meeting, and I wrote on my notes that there were mixed feelings on this one. So there was some back and forth on it. Um, I think Fran, who just spoke, is obviously a member of the ZBA. I know she supports it. Planning board members, do you remember anything specific from the ZBA? I just wrote down that there were mixed feelings, and we wanted to talk more about the criteria. Anything that stood out? Okay. So what, what does that lead you to say, Rick?
Well, I guess, I guess the chance of this being successful at town meeting will increase dramatically if, in fact, the planning board and zoning board both present their support for the article. If, in fact, on the floor of town meeting, zoning board members are going to oppose this, it's going to cause it to be more difficult for it to be, for it to be approved. So if there's any way between now and town meeting, the planning board and the zoning board can jointly come up with position on a present that, I think that would be helpful. And the reason I say that is because I, I support this. I supported it when I was on the planning board. I believe also that the way to do planning is to figure out what you want the town to look like in advance, to create zoning articles that propose that, to get public input as to what the town would like to see, and then modify the zoning by a vote of the legislative body to have the zoning for the town represent what the majority, or two thirds of the majority of the people in town want, and then to live by that. And if, in fact, people don't want dog grooming parlors in residential neighborhoods, and the zoning prohibits that, then there shouldn't be a way to get a dog grooming facility into, onto a residential lot when all the abutting neighbors had voted to not have been in the zoning. So I think it goes back to what Bob said about viewing this at ten thousand feet. From ten thousand feet, I think the question is, how do you establish and maintain your zoning? And my feeling is you do that through the legislative body. If, in fact, there's some incredible economic benefit to the town of Northborough that could be provided, but the zoning doesn't allow, and the timing is right, that that can be done and thought through and presented at the next upcoming town meeting, that's the way to do it. If the benefit to the town is so phenomenal that we can't wait for the next town meeting, there is the ability to call a special town meeting for some large economic development that could be allowed or, or approved through a change in the zoning. To the extent that individual landowners want to do something that's not allowed on their property, and to get a use variance to do that, I'll think benefits the town particularly. Uh, and it doesn't really affect our economic position. Same thing with downtown redevelopment. You know, there's another zoning article we're going to talk about tonight about doing something about groundwater rules in the downtown that will make it easier to do downtown revitalization. That's something that if we do that, the town will decide on that as a group. And I think we'll need to keep talking about other ways that we need to view the zoning to make downtown revitalization, you know, more effective, and maybe come up with our Warren articles for two thousand twenty-five town meeting. So my position would be that, uh, I think this ought to be supported, but I see a potential roadblock here if, in fact, the zoning board is a group or individual zoning board members stand up on the floor of town meeting and, and oppose this. So anything you guys can do to get in sync as, as two boards, I think would really help them.
Great point. Thanks, Rick. I appreciate it. Okay, a couple more comments here. Um, I have Paul Tagliaferry. Hi, Paul, just your name and address.
Hey, Carrie, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, Paul Tagliaferry, thirty-two Hemlock Drive. Uh, so I just wanted, uh, so I'm the chair of the ZBA. I just wanted to comment uh, just quickly in response to Rick Leaf, uh, as chair of the ZBA. So just historically, the ZBA has never voted on planning board zoning bylaws. Um, you know, I think, you know, in the past, you know, we, as a, as a zoning board that's appointed by the select board, you know, never thought it was sort of part of our jurisdiction to actually take a position on the planning board bylaws. Uh, and I, I don't see that changing in the future. So, um, you know, I don't think the ZBA, you know, with, with the powers that we have and, and sort of our position as part of the town government, um, takes a vote one way or the other with regards to the planning board bylaws. So I just wanted to comment quickly on Rick's point about the ZBA taking a position.
That's a great point, Paul. I think what we've seen in the past is, um, members from the ZBA will stand up and say, I'm a member of this, or any board, boards, people, uh, planning boards, sometimes board selectmen, ZBA, and say, I'm a member of this board, but I'm speaking as a resident. So that often is what will happen. I do think that'll be, um, to Rick's point, that, that will potentially happen. So I think, um, something to think about, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, and I guess I would just say, like, whether we, you know, the fact that the ZBA is not taking an official position is not indicative of our support or non-support for any of the planning bylaws. And I, I can't remember for as long as I've been in Northborough, the ZBA taking an official position on any planning.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
So, that's all.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, last comment on this one. I have Carter Brannan. Hi, Carter, just your name and address.
Hi, um, Carter Brannan, twenty-two Sherlin Drive. I was just wondering, I mean, I had a couple, a couple of questions. Um, one of them was, um, if, and it sounds like the kind of intention of this is that, um, the use variances and the, the use should be determined by the zoning that is done by the voters of the town at town meeting, as opposed to these variances that are um, being done by an appointed unelected, you know, five-member, um, board. And if that's the intention, is there perhaps a way to kind of, you know, if this were to go forward, um, clarify the process of how, how, you know, changing the zoning would happen at town meeting to make that an easier and perhaps regular part of development in the town?
So are you suggesting as part of the presentation at town meeting, make that clear that what the process is, or are you just saying in general for?
Even in general, um, I mean, either, either, or even, I mean, I think some of that might be a a state kind of legislature thing. Is there a way to even make that an easier process to, if there's even, you know, a smaller project that, that wanted to do something that require a zoning change, to make it either easier, whether by, through the, changing the process, or just making it more straightforward, people knowing what that process looks like?
Yeah, um, Laurie, do you happen to know, I think at one point, um, Andy Dowd, our town clerk, was working on some sort of like documentation for voters to understand how to, you know, make sure you register for town meeting, how to submit a bylaw, things like that. Do you know if that ever got anywhere? Have you seen it? I thought we had that.
I haven't seen that. The, the process of adopting a zoning change is set forth by mass general law. So there really isn't any flexibility. We all have to adhere to this process that's set forward by the state. Um, but certainly, we could provide a sheet that explains how how to, um, advance a zoning change. So if, if that would be helpful, then certainly we can provide that at town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking, like, if somebody was trying to. Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking like if somebody was trying to to go to to the town with something that, you know, would require a variance, but that's not allowed, would it, you know, making that easier to be, well, the process for this would be changing zoning bylaws and this is how you do it. Making that something that's kind of the answer when somebody asks the question.
That's a great point. I'm going to reach out to Andy because I could have sworn we had something that was along those lines, some sort of guide to help people. So it's a great point. Thanks for sharing that.
And then my other just comment is, I mean, I I think a lot of this makes sense, but I I worry that at town meeting, people are going to kind of perceive this if it's not clarified as like a kind of dispute between kind of taking power away from the different town boards. Because I have heard that kind of talked about in town after previous town meetings that the various town boards seem to kind of not be, sometimes seem like they're not all on the same page about things and kind of seem to be having like a, you know, I don't know, the local conspiracy theory of like a power struggle or something. But I I do worry that, you know, this, people might be suspicious of of kind of one board trying to or appearing to be like taking power away from another board.
Yeah, that's a good observation. We can think more about that a little bit. I would say that in the past, I I feel like that may have been the environment as well, in my own personal opinion. I do feel like we have gone to a better place where we can disagree without being disagreeable. So I think sometimes it's okay when we disagree and hopefully that's a perception that we can take care of over time. Because that would be unfortunate for the residents to feel that way.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving along to the next one. Those, I think those are the most challenging of the bunch. Okay, do you want someone specific to cover this, Lori? Or are you comfortable covering this one?
Yeah, I can cover this one. So the next article is to rezone a portion of the industrial district. So I have my cursor over the industrial district that we're talking about. And this is an ortho photo that shows some of the key properties that are located within that district. So we have Avalon of Northborough, we have Northborough Crossing, we have the Kimball gravel pit. This is the northern boundary. There is a residential condo development that is within the district to the north. There are some commercial uses and there is the New England Baseball Complex and the medical office to the south. So right now, as I mentioned, this area is currently zoned industry. This area also falls within the major commercial overlay district. So the proposal is to eliminate the major commercial overlay district because a lot of the uses that are currently allowed within that district would be allowed in the underlying zoning. The proposal is to rezone this area highway business southwest, so this would be a brand new zoning district. It would be very similar in nature to the existing highway business district. There are a couple of uses that would be different in this district as opposed to the highway business district. But the bulk of the uses would be similar. So when you're looking at the current uses, there are, of course, a couple of large multifamily developments, Avalon of Northborough as well as the other condo development, name escapes me at the moment. Those particular developments were 40B developments, so that's why they exist. The current zoning does not allow residential development. The new development, the new zoning, the underlying zoning would not allow residential development. However, as we previously discussed, Avalon would be within the new MBTA overlay district. So that is how that would be a permitted use. Then there are a couple of other uses that currently exist, like the gravel pit. That would be a grandfathered use. And then there's also a self-storage facility that would not be allowed in the current district. In the proposed district, however, once again, that'd be grandfathered. And the auto filling station. So there's BJ's Auto Filling Station that is part of Northborough Crossing. We did discuss at our last meeting possibly changing that from a no to a special permit use. I'm looking for some direction from the planning board, whether you want to make that change or not. Some other aspects of this, this bylaw is it includes the dimensional requirements, which would be identical to the highway business district. Forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, 150 linear feet of frontage. There also would be some changes to the the site design standards, but just so that they would apply to this this newly created district, Highway Business Southwest. So this change would advance a 2020 master plan goal to continue to support and manage commercial development outside of the downtown, particularly along Route 20 and Route 9, considering adjacent land use compatibility and the town's preservation priorities. So the way that this area has developed over time is not really in character with industrial district uses, which tend to be kind of heavy and not necessarily compatible with residential development. So the idea is to rezone the area so that we would get uses that are more compatible with what currently exists on the ground. Happy to hear. Do you see comments on this one?
Okay, so for this one, we had a couple of outstanding items for board members. Lori, you mentioned one of them. So we have the gas station. I also had, we were going to take a look at the board to approve the special permits. We talked last time, we wanted to do a little bit of consistency or have a rhyme or reason to which board was looking at them. Did we get, did we need to remove the language of the overlay? Was that something, Lori, that the overlay is now gone or we keep it?
So the idea is to remove the overlay. We did speak today to town council to to just verify that it wouldn't be wise to keep the the district in play if there's no land associated with it. And he did agree, it would be very confusing, especially for those of us who are the enforcers of the zoning bylaw. So once we leave, then of course, the institutional knowledge goes. And then the folks who who come in our footsteps aren't going to understand why there is a zoning bylaw, but no land associated with it.
Okay, so it sounds like overlay we're removing as originally, or not originally thought, but as discussed. And then Amy, you had some, I think you mentioned you had some changes or some thoughts on how we could kind of divvy up, I suppose, between ZBA and planning board?
Sure, I can share my screen. And then everybody can, you know, definitely have their feedback. Oh, wait, I don't want to share that. Let's see. I almost shared my screen, which would have been a picture of everybody. Okay. Do you just see the bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. All right. This is actually one thing I had changed. So these are all the same. I had changed the assisted living facility to yes in all of the senior communities, like assisted living, and there's another one down further, but someone had mentioned to me that we might want to ask the fire chief or police chief if this would be too taxing on the municipal services, because they get a lot of their calls from the nursing homes that are in town already. So I was just wondering if it's something we could do. Lori has just asked them if we added these into the new district, if they thought it would be, you know.
Or can we just make it a special permit instead?
We could do that. And that way, per application, we could just ask them as like we always do.
Thoughts on that from the board?
I think that makes sense to ask.
Oh, to ask or to just make it a special permit?
Well, I think we should check, obviously with, you know, services, fire and police to see if they have any problems with it.
So I guess we can ask them and then ask if it's okay if we do it by special permit. So then it's application by application.
Okay, so that sounds like we need some information there.
Okay, I think I highlighted the ones. So these are all the same as they were before. Okay, cultural use. I had planning board, but I'm okay if that's the ZBA since they already have cultural use. So I was thinking we could change that to the zoning board unless anyone feels strongly. I was keeping the hospital as planning board because we have it now. This other one, nursing home or rest home, we could go back to the ZBA. All the ones I highlighted, I was thinking if if the board doesn't care, we could swap it because they did have it as a use going across.
Yeah, yeah.
These were the other ones I thought of, you know, to ask the police chief and fire chief, you know, the nursing home.
And you're saying basically these are the uses to be allowed in the new district?
Yep, everything in this row is the new district. Right here is the highway business.
Okay.
Highway Business Southwest.
Got it.
And this is industrial.
So everything.
How to do word that I can keep.
Okay, yeah. I mean, in the cases where they, the ZBA has every other one in the district, I don't see why that would flip. If there's only like one other one, I guess it really doesn't matter as much, like the nonprofit club. But where there's a straight shoot across, it maybe just makes sense to keep it. I don't know, board members, how do you feel?
I.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
There was some, as I get down further, where it was the ZBA in the in the commercial zones and then it was the planning board had it for an industrial, so we both had it.
Yeah, I mean, I liked when we originally talked like we'd keep the industrial logic. So if we did it in industrial, we would do it. If we did the permit industrial, we would do it in highway business. But then in the cases where the ZBA has every other district, it would be kind of weird to flip it. Not weird, but.
Yeah, so I thought ZBA for that. This is a yes, the ZBA again for this. And Lori, you probably know, but some of these subscripts are still.
Yes, I fixed those.
Okay.
Were those added by town council, those?
At the number 13, no, those existed in the table before. It's just supposed to be like a footnote instead of a number 13. So I converted them into footnotes.
These I did leave as planning board because they seem like more of an industrial type of use, the commercial greenhouse, wholesale trade, grain and lumber. So we had talked about once, maybe some of the more heavy hitters that are more of an industrial use we could keep. I don't know if the ZBA cares, but those three I capped. And then the highlighted one, yep, that one I was going to go back to the ZBA. These are all yes, so. So like here, the ZBA and the planning board both approved, but we had decided at the last meeting just to leave them as a yes. Drive-through service, I was giving back to the ZBA.
Okay, so highlighted means ZBA flip.
Yeah, everyone I highlighted.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense if they're in every other district.
This one, the ZBA had some and the planning board had some, so I just left it as, because we did have that one commercial recreation outdoor, since we already did it, I left it with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the highlighted ones, I was thinking of swapping to the ZBA. So I can send it to Lori if she wants.
Yeah, that's fine. Just to make sure I didn't miss one.
Okay. Repair shop I left as planning board because that's.
So we can get back to the gas station issue.
Right, we're at the gas station. I still don't think we need more gas stations. We already have three.
So when, just out of curiosity, when you say we already have three in that area?
Yeah.
Well, oh, well, they're on Route 9.
Yeah.
Which, like I said, if you're commuting on Route 20, there's no way you want to go on Route 9 for gas.
Yeah, I think they're all on the eastbound side too. I could be wrong.
You go down.
The only one on Route 20 in the vicinity is the one at BJ's. And if you're not a member of BJ's, you can't use that gas station. So then you're going all the way into Shrewsbury, quite a distance, before you get another gas station.
Right.
If you put in your GPS, you go down Lawrence Street and you're on Peterson Gas, which is right on Route 9, but it's on the same side.
It is not convenient to get on Route 9 if you don't have to be on Route 9.
Because you're committed to a one-way.
So just to clarify, we could do a special permit for this, correct?
You could do a special permit.
Yes, I would recommend a special permit. I wouldn't do a by right.
Yeah, I don't see any reason to to rule it out entirely.
Yeah, and and partly because the thing with the gas stations is once they become gas stations, they're either going to continue for the most part as gas stations or they're going to stay empty. Because it's really hard to reuse a gas station. It's oftentimes not cost efficient.
Well, that's why I didn't want to add anymore.
Right, but this wouldn't be adding anymore. This would be continuing with the use of one, because otherwise it's it's going to sit empty.
No, this would add, this would allow new ones, I guess by special permit.
Right.
Remember, you don't want to have the gas stations in the town center.
Right.
So you're trying to discourage the gas stations from the town center, so they're not allowed there. So if the goal is to get rid of the gas stations there, you have to provide a new location on Route 20 where you allow gas stations.
Right, but they've grandfathered forever. Like if you have your tanks and your gas station downtown, you're not going to say, oh, the planning board doesn't want me downtown anymore. I'm going to spend my money and build a new gas station never mind.
No, but you think about the gas stations that have been sold. There was one recently for sale. So there is the potential to redevelop the gas stations for something else. And then somebody may say, hey, okay, well, I want to do a gas station. I'm going to do one over by BJ's Gas. I'm going to be competition for BJ's Gas and put one there. So then there will be less pressure because there's an alternative for those who are commuting on Route 20. So there's less pressure to use the downtown gas stations if there's another gas station on Route 20. Not downtown. That's my point.
I I don't care if it's a special permit. I just don't think they're up and moving. Did the person who bought the gas station, is it a non-gas station use or it's another gas station?
I don't know if it's sold yet.
Okay. Yep, no, I don't mind it as a special permit. I just, truthfully, I wouldn't want to expand any more gas stations. And I don't think one is going to up and move because it would be so expensive. And no one's going to want to move there and compete with BJ's. But that's okay, because then none of them will come. But that's okay, because then none of them will come.
So do you want it to be a planning board special permit or is ZBA a special permit?
I'd mirror the industrial zone and make it planning.
So the others are planning board right now. So I left them. The kennel. We had it, yes, and industrial and. The zoning board has one too, so I just left it as planning board. Because we had it in industrial, so I mirrored it, but I did it by special permit. I don't know if we want the kennel. Oh, I didn't even highlight it. If we want the kennel to be a special permit or.
If it's a by right use, then the planning board isn't approving it.
No, I mean, this is the new one right here. This is a special permit. It's by right and industrial. But it's special permit in highway business southwest, and I did that only because there's Avalon there. So there is housing over there. So left it as a special permit. Oh, these I don't want to change anymore because Lori and I did talk to the um town council today. And he said to change this to a no and leave everything. Industrial as a no.
Okay, and could you explain to the board the rationale behind that?
Yeah, so the, oh, sorry.
You can talk to it, Lori.
Um, so what he said is there are two types of uses that are considered um that they have to be allowed and those are. Hazardous waste facilities and solid waste disposal facilities. So if you have a district that allows industrial uses, then you have to allow those types of industrial uses. So if you don't want to allow those types of industrial uses, he said that the. The best thing to do is not allow any industrial uses.
So we'd have. So we're we're gonna have no's down the road there because we don't have any of those uses there right now. So. We might as well leave it a no. And those were all the changes. I don't know if anybody has anything else.
Any board comments on this or questions? Okay, so it sounds like we're going special permit on the gas station?
Yeah.
And then Amy, if you don't mind sharing this with the board to take a closer look, um but I think your. Your logic, I think, makes sense. Does any board member um? Think that logic does not make sense or have a question about it? Okay. All right, do you want to stop sharing there and I'll open up?
Unless um someone has a comment. I can go to the area if you want me to.
That's okay, if you stop sharing because it's hard for me to see everybody at the same time.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Um, okay, a couple of questions I'm going to let in. Okay, I have Lisa Micali. Just your name and address. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Carrie. Um, I would Lisa Micali thirteen Maple Street, going back to the last. Uh. The last block that you had. Um, as you took it screen down, so you're taking out all industrial uses. Because if you allow one, you allow them all, correct? So go down to the the last. Um. Yes, hold it right there. So you've got you've got solid all these. Oh, I see. It's just gonna be in the next to last column. That you're working on right now.
Correct, yes.
Sorry, because I thought all in general.
Because any of. It's hard to see because it's the the headers. You can't see the header across each page. Yeah, that's the highway business southwest um district, the second to last column.
Okay, and that's the one that you're working on right now.
Correct.
So what's the last group in that column? What is that under? All industrial?
Industrial.
All right. And so have do you have to have hazardous waste and solid waste disposal facilities? Is that a is that a prerequisite for everything in town?
You do have to have one area that allows it.
So if you have industrial dis- industrial uses, then you have to allow. Hazardous waste facility and solid waste disposal facility. If if you have a district that doesn't allow industrial uses, then you do not need to allow those two.
Okay, so it's just in that one section. As opposed to all all across the board.
Right.
Okay, all right, that's, you know. You've had so much problems with hazardous waste and solid waste that. I wouldn't like to keep that open. And um and can I also talk about the gas stations as well? Uh quickly, the I mean, Northborough was nineteen thirties. We had around thirty five gas stations in the town. Which is kind of crazy. I don't know what town has ever had that many gas stations, but um. I think adding more gas stations is uh probably not not the best thing for the town. I think we have an awful lot of groundwater and uh areas that uh. We don't need more gas stations. We have four downtown. We have two uh on the way. Kelly's, I think it's called Kelly's. I don't remember the name of it. But on the way out on twenty is right on the Shrewsbury line. Next to um. The um Christmas tree shop. It's just a little bit down the road. So I mean, really with gas stations and I I agree that I don't think. That companies are putting that many many more gas stations on anything but the main roads like Route nine. We just had a new one put in where the the green thumb was in Waspro. So that's my take on the gas stations.
Thank you, good feedback. Oh, did you have something else, Lisa? Did I cut you off there?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I have Scott Rogers. Hi, Scott.
Hi, Scott Rogers again, twenty six Tom Pop Drive. Uh, I think at the top of the hearing here, you said that uh the plan is to continue the hearing and so this table. Would be republished once the edits made, that'd be available for review. Further comment that at the next session.
Sure.
That'd be great. Yeah, it would be easy to then review what the changes are and then be able to comment against it. Thanks.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, um Fran Baxter. Hey, Fran.
Thank you again, Fran Baxter in seventy six Cedar Hill Road. Um, I do appreciate the the edits that were made since the last meeting. Um, I do think it is important to have the. Special permit authority be similar to what was in either or, but if if it was an allowed use in industrial. In this highway business southwest, it probably should be planning board because you would have been the special permitting authority if it was industrial. I think it's important that we try to eliminate or minimize as many industrial uses as possible since we are trying to make it into more of a business zone. So I think that that's important and I definitely. Um, think that assisted living should have some type of special permit or site plan approval. Um, regardless of what district it is, I know that you had thought yes. But you know, even with input from our first responders, I I think I'm thinking about the one that's proposed at King Street. I can't imagine it not having to go through some type of special permit with site plan approval. Um, you know, for something that could be that large. Um, and lastly, not everyone is a BJ's member, so not everyone can use the BJ's membership. Um, gas station. And if we did not, if you'd. If you change your mind and decided not to make it by special permit, you would be creating a nonconformal preexisting use, which then could cause potential. Issues for them in the future should they want to do any type of expansion and or modification. So I would strongly. Recommend special permit. Um, and again, I it doesn't matter. Who the special permit authority is, but that it is an allowed use by special permit. And that's it.
Great, great feedback. Thanks, Fran. Okay, and then Carter Brandon. Hi, Carter.
Hi, um Carter Brandon, twenty two Sherland Drive. Um. I was just noticing on the chart here are. A few uses that are proposed to be allowed by right that are. Not allowed by right in any existing district. Um, and. I just think some of that maybe shouldn't. Shouldn't be taken kind of lightly that it it previously has not been allowed by right and is being proposed to. Um, the ones that stood out to me were the the breweries. Um, I. Personally don't think that um. I think special permits would make more sense for most kind of alcohol sales. Um, places. Um, and there are just a few others that are um. I mean, I think it's it's you would be it would be a big change to be making something um. That is not allowed by right anywhere in the town to being allowed by right in a district and. Um. I think that should get more. Attention rather than doing that in a. And make a very large article that. Uh. You know, not necessarily having time to discuss each. Kind of discuss at town meeting each individual um piece of.
Hmm. So that's a good question, Carter. Um, and I just want to make clear that every one of these goes under some sort of review, so it could it could be a site plan review. Um, obviously, what the permit does it is allow it's a discretionary. Type review, so you don't have to approve it. Um, with the site plan review, you typically um you're hard pressed to not approve it overall. But Lori, a- as a planner, what are your thoughts on? Um. Allowing that use uh as a by right use? Is that something that's better to do, helpful in what we're trying to do, or do you think? The permit's a better option? I'm just curious for your thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, generally, if you have a by right use, then the discretion, uh the the board's discretion. Uh, is kind of out the window, so there's a level of assurance that the um. The applicant has that the project will be approved. So as long as they. Follow the uh rules and regulations of site plan approval. Assuming that this is gonna be new construction. Um, then they would um. Would feel comfortable that it's gonna be approved. With a special permit. Um, the the board has a lot more discretion, so they could choose to deny a project just because they don't think it's a good fit there. Um, so.
But what do you think in terms of, do you think it's um? Should we consider special permits there or is it? Should is it something we want to allow by right? I feel like we can't have everything in town be a special permit. Is it? I'm just wondering your philosophy, I guess.
You know, I I think when it comes to like small scale, like a nano or a micro brewery, those are really small scale. So I don't really see that there would be much danger in having it be a by right use. Uh, when you when you get to a brewery or a winery or a large scale. Distillery. Um, then there could be more issues, particularly having to do with traffic. And parking. Um, so I could see the benefit of changing that specific a brewery, distillery or winery to a special permit use. And then leaving the others as by right uses.
Bob, I see your hand up there.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. Um. In terms of the breweries and and whatnot, um. I I drive, excuse me, I drive by Cold Harbor Brewing Company to work every day. And they they have. A raging success over there, but they have a really bad parking problem. And you know, my fear is that if a brewery or something like that were to come to town. During what process would? Um, the town be able to. You know, require either additional parking or provide for potential parking. A potential increase in parking, say a year or two down the road. Um, you know, it's and and I don't know if that would be as part of just the site plan review or if it. Needs to be tied into a um. A special permit. I'm 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 just throwing that out there because. Um, you know, it's it's we're the only town without a brewery. And we're gonna get one sooner or later and um I'd hate to see the the parking debacle repeated that um. Cold Harbor has. So I I just don't know where. That control would be, whether it's in a site plan review or within the special permit. I don't know which one would have more teeth.
Okay, um, board members, how do you feel about switching that to a special permit by way of that point and maybe others?
Yeah, I think the special permit makes more sense.
It's a site plan.
Oh, sorry, I was gonna say, I do think the special permit does make more sense for this, for at least for the larger ones. But also I think that would fall under site plan review, so I don't know if there would be certain criteria for. Uh, that type of a business for parking. But one thing I don't think we could do in a site plan review, and correct me if I'm wrong, is like, Bob, you brought up two years from now if there's a problem. I don't think we can put a time limit on it. I don't, can we, Bob or Lori, do you know in site plan review? Yeah, Bob.
There was a um. If I remember right, when the shops went in. Um, there was a provision in one of the documents. That said, based upon the traffic flow, they may be required to put in that secondary stoplight. Um, where the uh fire pump station is. It was put in, I think it was put in maybe five years ago. Um, but that was after a review of the traffic patterns and the situations. Uh, using only the one. Uh, one entrance with a traffic light. Okay, the second entrance that had always been there. But I think there was some sort of provision that um that allowed the town to review. And then require that traffic light if the situ- situation warranted.
Yeah. Amy, you have something?
I'll have to go further, but didn't we do um? A condition like that for the soccer field?
Yeah.
Um, parking, but weren't wasn't the soccer fields, didn't we allow that by right?
So. Um, a special permit gives you more power to require offs- offsite improvements. You can also require offsite improvements if the applicant agrees to it under a site plan or approval. Um, if the applicant doesn't agree to it and it's a special permit, you can still use it. You can still apply it. So you you have more power with a special permit than you do with site plan review.
So the hotel should probably be a special permit. Because I would think that's a big. And any of these that you guys agree, I can change the special permit, but I was just looking up here too. A hotel. Would probably we would want a special permit on.
I mean, in my opinion, I would say that those would be the big ones of the bunch and then, I mean, I think the other ones are okay. But other board members, you feel differently or?
I think restaurants would be fine. But you're right about ho- I I agree with hotels and the breweries.
Any other?
About these two because they're by special permit in the other zones. The Nano, Lori says it's small.
Yeah, they seem small enough. I don't know, I. I I for some reason, I'm trying to avoid all special permits in the district or in this particular area because we have such. I don't know, it seems like I I hear a lot of residents always looking, we don't have enough restaurants or we don't, I don't know, I hate to.
That's what I'm trying to do to be more business friendly. You know, by putting a lot of yeses in even up top with the assisted living and stuff.
I mean, Millie, is someone familiar with restaurant ownership? Like, would a special permit scare you away or? Not necessarily or? I don't I don't think it would scare me away. I mean, for me, I I guess I feel it's just part of the the. Part of the process. My guess is in half the towns that we would go to, you would need a special permit. In certain areas. Okay.
So Amy, are you putting Hotel Motel Conference Center as a uh ZBA special permit?
What I put is planning board because we had it. It was in the industrial zone before. Like. It had both of us. And since the area was already under planning board, I just put it under planning board.
You'll just have to clarify that because your logic before was anything highlighted was a flip to ZBA, so that's not.
Oh, that's right.
You'll just have to make sure that's clear.
Maybe I'll highlight it now that I changed it.
So for board members, what do you, what's your preference on um? Do we want to stick to the hotel and brewery or do we have others that are?
Changed to red, my new highlight. Do you want me to start at the top of the list again and we go down slowly?
No, no, I think I'm just, so this is, I think. I think this is probably the section that it would most impact.
Yeah, I'm fine with how it looks now.
I think I'm okay with where it is. Anthony, what are you thinking?
Yeah, this looks good.
Millie? Thoughts for me on that? Nope. I think it looks good. All right, Carter, you're hired.
Um, if if I just may um make more of a just. Suggestion of why I, I think even the, the micro breweries should have a special permit is, um, I think. Right now. Um. The kind of public perception is favorable and wanting some kind of a brewery and more. Um, restaurants and stuff in the town, but I think that isn't something that is a, a constant kind of public. Opinion, I think especially. Um. Alcohol, I think that has, kind of goes through phases of being, people want more alcohol sales and people want less. I mean. You know, there have been times where all alcohol sales have been illegal, not only in the town, but in the country. There's other times people are very much wanting more. Again, right now, people want breweries. Twenty years from now, people might be a little more suspicious of alcohol sales. And to me, it makes sense if. The town had a little more, uh. Control over whether they wanted more or less of that kind of stuff.
Okay, all right, great. Any other feedback?
Nope, those all, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks so much. I mean, I think if it's small enough that site plan review can cover. You know, I think for the bigger ones, it's, we want to be mindful. I mean, I think in a worst case scenario, we could come back to it. You know, anything that we feel isn't working well, we could come back in special permanent. I guess we could easily do the reverse, but. I don't feel strongly about a special permit for the smaller ones. I don't know if anybody does.
Just don't know what, um, Cold Harbor was considered, a micro brewery or a brewery. Microbrewery is fifteen thousand barrels per year.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't even see the brewery definition. In my book.
Do you have the red one?
They do have the red one on page seven thirty-six, and it goes through brew prob, nano, and micro, and then there's no brewery. Might have gotten left off.
I think it's in the industrial.
Okay, that's why.
Yeah, it's a number seven. On page seven forty-one.
Oh, there it is, yep.
So that includes retail and wholesale.
I mean, that's where you're really going to get into your parking problems, right? To Bob's point.
Maybe, Bob, if you could review, if you don't mind, brewery and microbrewery, and let us know if you think. Microbrewery also needs special permit?
Maybe I should do a field investigation over Cold Harbor for here too.
We can all go.
Definitely.
Definitely has to happen. I just don't know the, the difference, so. If you and Lori think it might need a special permit. You know, we could talk about it next time.
Special visit.
Yeah, they sound very similar. It's just a matter of we put a cap on the first. We don't put a cap, obviously, on the brewery, so. All right, so we can figure out if that's warrants a permit or not, but otherwise, um. Anything else on this one?
There was, further down. When it got to the dimensional table.
Oh, sure.
I was questioning. You know, we, this was the industrial district that we're changing to highway business southwest. And I was wondering if we should also have a maximum lot coverage. For those areas. So right now. Highway business is on Route nine, this is on Route twenty. And so if we're copying the industrial zone, it would have stayed at. Fifty twenty-five. We followed the highway for the lot size, because that would give. Um, probably more people a chance to do something, you know, a smaller lot size. Hmm, do you have an opinion, Lori, or anybody on the board?
I don't, um. You know, uh, parking is going to be a limiting factor. Uh, when you take into account the twenty-five percent. Uh, open space requirement, so I think it's fine to have a lot coverage requirement fifty percent. That's still a twenty thousand square foot building, so that's, that's still really generous.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. Any board members opposed to that or question it?
Is that the only other, I think that's the only other change I had on that bylaw.
Okay. Moving on to the next one then.
All right. All right, so the next one. Is a change to, uh, the design review section, so this is under site plan review. Um, so this aims to address, uh, uh, comments in the downtown revitalization plan report. Uh, the business signage in the downtown is inconsistent in its age, quality, design, location, and size. So what, uh, this change would do is it would enable, uh, it would give the design review committee, the jurisdiction. Uh, to review certain types of signs within the downtown business district only. Um, so this would be part of the typical sign permit process, so that is filed with the building department. So in this case, the design review committee would be advisory to the building inspector. Um, so these would be recommendations, um, and the enforcing authority would be the building inspector. Um, and then there are also some changes to the composition of the design review committee. So we've been having a lot of trouble filling vacancies, uh, so we've had one vacancy on design review committee. For the entire two years that I've been here. Um, and longer than that. And then we've been without an architect for the last, um, maybe three or four months. Um, so this would, uh. Enable, um, a greater variety of professionals to serve. And it would also allow those who are not residents of the town of Northboro, but work within the town of Northboro. To sit on the design review committee. So if there were. An architectural firm in the town, and there was an architect who was interested in serving. Then, uh, he would be eligible to serve. He or she. Any questions about this one?
That's not limited to architects, I mean, or does that?
Nope. Um, so there would be, uh. Five spots. So one would be a member of the planning board, one would be a degreed architect. One would be a degreed landscape architect or person qualifying by training in landscape design. And then there'd be two residents in some sort of, uh, design or development, uh, backgrounds. Such as real estate development, landscape design, architecture, historic preservation. Uh, civil engineering, et cetera. And then under D is a balance of representation as close as possible to this mix. So that's kind of the, the leeway.
So the two residents would obviously then. Be still in the criteria makeup.
So the, the, yes, so then, so the landscape architect. And the degreed architect wouldn't necessarily have to be residents.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, comments or questions from the public? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, um, Scott, you have a question there? Hold on. Just your name and address.
Yeah, Scott Rogers, twenty-six Tomahawk Drive. What's, what's the current timelines for a sign permit, uh, currently that, that is, that goes in front of the building department?
Leave us thirty days, so that timeline would not change.
So the idea is to, um. Have time for the design review committee to review that permit, but not extend. The timing that, uh, that the town took to. Issue the, the permit.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Hey, other questions? All right, I think we can move to the next one.
Not changing. Uh, here we go. Uh, so the next one creates two new definitions, um, for two new uses that are not currently allowed, but would be allowed. Um, so it provides definitions for co-working space and maker space. Uh, so co-working space is, uh, kind of a shared office environment. Uh, where people, uh, share equipment and they share conference rooms and. Um, and the, the like. Um, and maker space is kind of the same idea. It's where you, but it's more on an industrial scale, so they'd be sharing tools and, um. Equipment. Um, so in addition to these. Two new definitions, um, we are proposing to put co-working space. As a by right use in all of our current zoning districts. Um, the business districts and the industrial districts, so that would not apply to residential districts. Um, and under industrial uses, we would allow maker space. By special permit in business south. And by special permit of the planning board in the industrial district. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that one?
Anything from the board? Oh, Amy, you got something?
Yeah, I'm just, and I'm not for or against, I'm not against it, but I was just asked, uh, wondering why. Business south was picked for maker space.
Um, because it does currently allow a lot of industrial districts. I mean, I'm sorry, industrial uses.
Okay, I was just curious, I didn't know why. There are some warehouses over there, so maybe there could be some reuse over on Lawrence Street or something.
Okay, other board comments or questions? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, moving along.
Okay, so the next two articles, um, are very closely related. So the first one, um, is, uh, putting commercial developments. Uh, within the groundwater protection overlay district, area three. On the same, uh, level playing field. Uh, so this is the type of commercial development that does not deal. With toxic or hazardous materials. So if it's commercial development that does deal with those materials, those would be special permit uses. Um, if it's the other type of commercial development, then it would be now a, um. By right use. If, uh, the. Um, if the property is served by public sewer. Um, then there would not be a mandatory upsize in the minimum lot size. However, if it is served by private sewage disposal on site, so for example, a septic system. Then they would have to meet the twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size requirement. There are certain performance standards. Having to do with the amount of impervious surface. Um, the, uh. Quality of groundwater recharge, as well as septic system capacity. Um, that currently are required, uh, under the special permit requirement in area three. So those would be still required, except now it'd be a by right. Um, requirement instead of a special permit requirement, so it would be enforced by staff. Instead of enforced by the ZBA. So, um. That's the first bylaw has to do with commercial development. And then the second, uh, bylaw change has to do with two-family and multifamily developments. Uh, so the same would apply. Uh, you would have to, uh, be subject to the mandatory twenty thousand square foot. Upsize in the minimum lot size. But only if you, uh, are not hooked up to the public sewer. And then you're still subject to the same perfor- performance standards. Uh, that I talked about having to do with, uh, groundwater recharge, quality. Impervious surface and septic system capacity. So, the, the main, the main point. Is, um, because this groundwater. Area three has been a huge impediment to development in the downtown area. Uh, where the underlying zoning have, has minimum lot sizes that vary from four thousand. To, uh, fifteen thousand square feet. Um, because of this twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size requirement. There are fifty-eight lots in the town center that are considered non-conforming. And, uh, need to get dimensional variances. If they're interested in changing their use or expanding the use over what it currently is, so. Uh, that's a big problem, uh, for those who are interested in doing development projects.
Hmm. Okay, any further board questions or comments? Comments or questions from the public? I woke up all. Uh, Lisa Misselli. Uh, Carrie Lisa Misselli, thirteen Maple Street. Um, I have a question about. In the area of West Main Street where we have a couple of, um, contractor yards. Is this something that affects, are they, are they part of those fifty-eight lots in the center?
No. So, so I only looked at the downtown business district. And the downtown neighborhood district to determine, uh, which lots are non-conforming. And those are the ones that have the small minimum lot sizes. Um, and in the underlying zoning. That is negatively impacted by this twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size requirement. Um, so as you go further down on West Main Street. Uh, you're most likely in a district where the minimum lot size is, is twenty thousand square feet. Uh, or greater with the underlying district.
Okay. And how does it affect the, the three gas stations that are there, or the four gas stations that are there?
So those are commercial facilities that deal with, um, hazardous and, uh, toxic waste. So those are still special permit uses.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Lisa. Okay, I have, um, Rick Leaf. Eric.
Hello again, Rick Leaf, thirty Wiles Farm Road, once again speaking as Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. This is another, uh, item on the zoning. Uh, changes going to town meeting that Lori did review with the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And we support this particular article. We agree that. For those businesses that are on water and sewer in the downtown, it opens up the possibility in the future of some. Uh, acquisition of lots or creation of. New businesses as business owners over time, which in selling their businesses, developers would have a easier chance of coming in and. Doing some of the things that people envision in the town center. Um, if these, uh, zoning bylaw, uh, groundwater restrictions were removed, so we feel this is a. A good article that in the future will allow some of the redevelopment in downtown that people are looking for, so the. MPIC supports this particular zoning amendment.
Oh, that's great to hear. Thanks for sharing that.
Okay, Lori, can you put that, um, bylaw back up? I was a little confused by the way it was worded. So where it says. So, where it says on the fourth bullet eliminates mandatory increase in minimum lot size to 20,000. Are you saying that basically it already has that minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, right? So, it's not really eliminating the increase, it's just eliminating the mandatory lot size. Is that minimum lot size, correct? Am I reading that wrong?
Sorry, you're a mute, you're a mute.
I, I understood.
The underlying zoning district for downtown business, the minimum lot size is 4,000 square feet. However, because almost all of the downtown business district falls within Area Three of the groundwater protection or overlay district, the minimum lot size isn't 4,000 square feet. It really is 20,000 square feet.
Okay, I got it. I, I understand it.
Amy, you have something?
Yeah, my only change that I'd like to see on this bylaw is I would like to see some of, one of the relevant town staff members to review it, to have either a civil engineering degree or environmental engineering degree or a PE, a professional engineer. The very last sentence says determination to be made by the building inspector in conjunction with other relevant town staff. I was on the groundwater committee and we relied on Fred, and he was the engineer. So, when we got rid of the groundwater committee, we said, well, at least Fred's still gonna review them. And now Fred is gone. So, I just want to make sure it's like in our bylaw stated that one of the relevant town staff has an engineering background. And the water and sewer did meet, and actually Lisa Miselli is the, I hate to speak for her, she's the liaison, so she went to that meeting. And I asked her what they talked about. And one of the things that the, the board members did say to Scott Charpentier was, you know, what do you mean by relevant town staff? Will it be someone with a PE, which is a, a personal engineering degree? And he said, yes. He said that he, I think he said Vinny's a PE, he's a PE, and the new Assistant Town DPW person has a civil engineering degree. But, you know, like we had talked about before, staff changes and, and people don't know what is read into the bylaw. So, in the future, if a future planning board or, or a planner is here, I would want them to know that as a, at least me, as a planning board member, I want to make sure that the groundwater applications are reviewed by someone who has that degree.
Can I suggest a compromise? And the reason why I'm concerned about this is because most DPW directors are not engineers and most assistant DPW directors are not engineers. In fact, when we reviewed the candidates, there was only one engineer. None of the other candidates have that qualification. So, I'm concerned that if we say, you know, just other relevant town staff or the staff has to be an engineer, then we're not taking advantage of the possibility that we will have a consulting engineer. So, I mean, they may decide in the future to fill Fred's position, so it could be a town engineer or it could be a consultant, consulting engineer. So, I, I get your point, where you're trying to get. So, maybe if we can say such determination to be made by the building inspector in conjunction with other relevant town staff and/or consulting engineer.
How about such determination shall be made by the building inspector, comma, a PE with other relevant town staff? Like, I think, I think it has to be said, I think you just said it, or, or a consulting engineer. Like, I think if we don't have an engineer employed by the town, then we would need a consulting engineer to review the document. I just think somewhere, and, well, I don't know your background, Bob, do you? I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't know, did you have a engineering degree?
I do not have an engineering degree, but I've been in this field for a long time. But that still does not make me an engineer. I would say if you wanted to involve an engineer, I would say at the minimum a civil engineer. I think going for a full-on PE for something in, in this situation might be a little bit of a, a stretch, but it would be nice to have. I mean, the nice thing is, right now, we're, we're kind of thick with, you know, PEs in this, in this, in this town. You know, not every town has one. There are some towns that don't have any. So, in which case, you know, if something with that to happen, you have to have a consulting engineer that's either on retainer or, you know, the, the applicant pays for a third-party engineering review.
Right. And then that would happen on this, right? Since we have that in our bylaws? Like, if we wrote such determination to be made by the building inspector in conjunction with a civil, I do civil slash environmental engineer, because wouldn't an environmental engineer also study those groundwater aspects?
Would we just say engineer and not specify?
Well, you wouldn't want a mechanical engineer, probably.
I doubt we would go for, I don't think.
I would, I would probably specify a civil engineer.
So.
Well, one of the reasons why I think the building inspector is kind of first on the list is that any kind of an engineer doesn't have any enforcement power or, or permitting power for that matter. Yeah, that being said, I don't think I've ever made a decision in town that involves groundwater without, you know, Lori or, or Fred or Vinny or somebody, you know, who has, you know, more experience than I do, you know, and, and with a stamp of expertise. So, that's, you know, write whatever you want, but you know, what's done in practice is that, you know, I don't make that decision without their input.
Right. No, it's nothing, it's not, I'm not trying to point it out to you, I'm just trying to add an engineer into the mix in writing. So, when it goes forward 10 years from now, you know, who, who says who's the relevant town staff? And I heard that the water and sewer department said the same thing. And Scott said, oh, it will be a PE or a civil engineer. So, I just want to get that in writing because the groundwater is really important to me and important to everybody. And.
Well, I, I, I think, I think putting relevant town staff, I mean, if we have a civil engineer on staff, then that would take care of the civil engineer slot. So, we wouldn't need a consulting engineer. But if we don't have a civil engineer on staff, then we would need a consultant. So, that's why I'm suggesting building inspector in conjunction with other relevant town staff or, I mean, maybe instead of saying relevant, qualified?
I just want the engineering in there. Like, it used to say the town engineer. So, I don't know.
Yes, but you, you understand what I'm saying. You know, the DPW director may or may not be an engineer. The assistant DPW director may or may not be an engineer. The town engineer would be an engineer, of course, but that position may or may not be fulfilled. So, I don't want to specify, you know, we may, may not have an engineer on staff, or we may have an engineer. Right now, we have an engineer who sits in the conservation agency. That's very unusual. That should, that will never happen again after Vinny leaves.
If we don't have engineer, a town engineer or somebody with engineering expertise, must we go to a consulting engineer?
Yes.
Okay, so could we just say the building inspector, town engineer, or consulting engineer? So, if we don't have one on staff, we have a plan B?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. I just want it in there somewhere, that it's, it's an engineer.
How about if I say staff engineer? So, then it doesn't matter what that person's position title is.
But what if it's a consulting engineer?
Staff engineer or consulting.
Or consulting engineer.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, sorry, I just thought Lisa had her hand up, I'm just gonna allow her to talk for a second. Lisa, did you have something there?
Hi, Lisa Miselli, 13 Maple Street. Yes, I, I did, I was, I was at the meeting, so I want to, I want to validate what Amy had said. Prior to all of this, when they were deciding that they weren't going to have a groundwater committee anymore, one of the statements that I remember was that if we didn't have somebody on staff, then they would be required, whoever it was, to go and get a third-party engineer to overlook all of it. And I think that's, I mean, we're talking groundwater, we're talking changing the, you know, the space, we have so much of it. We didn't have so much groundwater, I don't think would be as, as concern, but I think it's, it's a, a resource that I think we have to respect. And I, it's very important that we have, you know, the correct engineer to oversee whatever the conditions that are supposed to be adhered to. And I appreciate the fact that right now, we don't have one and perhaps we may have to then hire one because they, you know, they always had a very important place in the town. And, and I do believe at the time that our new DPW assistant was hired, one of the reasons why, why was because that she did have a civil engineer degree. So, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize that, I think that is something that really should be in there. I think that, I don't know if, if the building inspector's always been a part of this and saying in conjunction with sounds better than just a comma and just, you know, these are listing the other people, because you want to be able to have the two of them work together. And I think that, you know, that's, that should be in the language because we're not always going to be here and people aren't going to know, you know, what all of these different committees have said in the past. So, I would be more specific with it.
Okay, great, thanks for bringing that forward.
Yeah, they said back, the reason for groundwater bylaws were to protect not only the public wells that aren't in use right now, but everybody's private wells.
Okay, so it sounds like we added that to reflect that in here, so that change has been made. Anything else with this one? We ready to move to the next one? Okay.
All right, so the next one is updating the language as to outdoor lighting. So, of course, now the trend is to go with LED lighting. So, this, we're adding the language full cutoff and the lighting should conform to dark skies guidelines as stated by the International Dark Sky Association.
Good, board questions on this one? Okay, public comments or questions? Okay, nothing there, if we're gonna move to the next one?
All right, so this is also a change to the site design standards. This would update the requirements having to do with building placement, design, and orientation. So, the 2012 Northborough Design Guidelines state materials used for building exteriors and landscaping features should be consistent with the traditional New England building vernacular. There's a strong preference for this. And this article adds these preferences into the bylaw as a requirement. And so, this would apply to new construction or significant expansions of commercial use, the uses that trigger site plan review only. I know we did receive a comment from Fran on this one.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Let's see, so first, any questions, additional questions or comments from the board? Okay, and then, let me look here, from Fran, we had. Did Fran send her email today? I think I just had it up. Or was it yesterday? Now I can't find it.
I can summarize it if you'd like me to say what she said.
That's okay, I just found it, it was from yesterday, I thought it was today for some reason. Um, let's see. Is this the one where she thought about the building finish shall be appropriate, the question about shell?
She was concerned about using the phrase traditional New England architecture. That's kind of been something that we've been grappling with, how do you define that? So, her suggestion is to eliminate that phrase, traditional New England architecture. So, just specify what the material should be without saying that phrase.
Wait, so I don't see that in her email, I just see she asks what traditional New England means what? Does she say that she wants to eliminate it or she's just asking for clarification?
That was my understanding.
Okay, so what, I, I don't know if that's what she meant for it. So, I see in the email, she's wondering how we can require shell for a concept that is not clearly, well or clearly defined, traditional New England means what? So, I don't see anything about striking it, I don't know if she said something to you separately about it, but.
I, I honestly agree with her, I, I don't know what it means, there really isn't a specific guide. If you Google, it does show you, you know, like residential styles of architecture that were common in New England over the last 200 years. So, the newest ones are about 100 years ago. But when it comes to commercial construction, it doesn't really speak to it, not anything I could find online, anyway.
Amy, you had something about that one?
Yeah, I Googled it too, and I think what this bylaw comes down to, it all started with many of the towns that are doing downtown revitalizations or even on their main streets don't have industrial buildings, because if you look up, I mean, metal buildings, because if you look up metal, I have it, metal cladding, says, let me make it bigger. Metal cladding is one of the most commonly used materials in industrial building construction, available in steel, aluminum. So, the main thing was to try to keep the metal buildings that look industrial in the industrial zone. So, to do that, I actually took what was in our design review guidelines and put it into our bylaws. So, what the wording is there now is what we have in our design review guidelines. But I did Google New England architecture too, and traditional New England architecture primary, primarily uses locally sourced materials such as bricks, stones, and wood, because they used the materials that were local to the homes that they were building. And that's why when I looked at Chusbury and Milbury and all the other bylaws, they also use the same type of wording where you, our materials are brick, high-quality brick face, we added in wood, we added in cement, fiberboard, because that's popular right now, stone or high-quality stone face. So, that's what the, when I looked up traditional New England architecture, because there are a couple of books listed under the design review, and it was using materials that were used traditionally in New England. But if it's going to give everybody heartache to leave in the words traditional New England architecture, my main point was to make sure there were no industrial metal buildings in our business zones. So, we could, I mean, I don't think it's bad to leave New England architecture in it because we're not the only town that does it, it's in Chusbury. New England architecture in it, because we're not the only town that does it. It's in Chusbury and Milbury and Medway and a lot of different towns. But if people thinks that it's gonna cause a lot of heartache, I would change it to say building finished materials shall include, shall be limited to brick, high-quality brick face, you know, the, the same listing.
Any board thoughts on that? When thinking of that through a little bit? Billy or something?
Yeah, so, um, I would be concerned about, you know, twenty years from now, when, you know, we may not, the, this same makeup may not be on the board anymore, and you know, now they have to look up what is New England architecture, right? And they may come up with a different search and completely different than what we were originally intending. So I think, you know, to that point, I, I think Amy's right. I think we need to remove the New England architecture and just put in specifically what we're looking to do.
Hmm. Millie or Anthony, thoughts on that one?
And I'd like to keep it simple. I wanna say, um, building finished materials shall be limited to, because it, right now it says may include, but shall not be limited to, because it has a may and a shall. I just think it should be building finished materials shall be limited to brick, high-quality brick face wood. And it just says, yeah, metal or fiberglass as a primary finished surface shall not be used. And, and we love vinyl out because, uh, we had this discussion before. So it's not prohibited. It's just not called out.
Does that sound like a good compromise for the board or other thoughts on it? Millie, anything from you? You're smiling there. No, okay. You're mute, though.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. So we're, there's a little modification there for the New England architecture, but to do a specifically what we want, put in, take up, we, but the point of this is to get the metal out.
Hmm, yeah, the point of it was the materials. It really wasn't what a New England home should look like, but I think traditional New England architecture, the, what they used for materials was what I, you know, what we decided on and what the other towns have decided on.
Okay, but if we put the materials in, that would have been the definition, it's the same thing? Okay.
Yeah, it's the same thing. It just takes out those words.
Okay.
So I know we've talked about this before, but this would mean no vinyl siding.
It wasn't mentioned, I thought.
Well, if we say that building finished materials shall be limited to these, that means nobody can do vinyl siding. So if you want to allow vinyl siding, then we should put it here.
Should we put high-quality vinyl? I don't know if there's a difference, but I did when I was doing all my research. It was talking about vinyl. And, uh,
Wait, this is just the downtown district though, right?
No, this is everything but industrial.
Oh, okay, I'm thinking of a different bylaw.
That's a tough call on vinyl. Because there is some good-looking vinyl, I have to say. Bob has his hand up.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the bylaw.
If, if, if your biggest concern is that you don't want steel-clad buildings in these zones, why don't you just say, um, the use of steel-clad siding or building or whatever is not allowed.
Hmm.
Because it seems as though you want everything else in except for steel. Just say steel is not allowed and just let it go at that.
Have to think about it. Originally, I was trying to get the design review guidelines to match the bylaw. So that's why that paragraph is there, because that's what it says in the design review guidelines. Oh, no, it doesn't. Similar. So it doesn't. That's actually what it says in Milbury's design review ga, I mean, Milbury's bylaws. I don't know.
That's all only in the industrial district, so, um, so it says that in the industrial district, you can't do metal buildings, but you can do vinyl siding, like all those others are allowed in the other districts. Raymondville
Recording in progress.
Has, uh, some additional
Recording stopped.
Sorry, I pressed a button.
Thought you were giving us a hint. Time's up. You're done.
I could see by your face it was you, because you had a very confused look. I'm like, what's happening?
Sorry, I'm sorry, Laurie. Okay, so which way do we go with that? Is it a not, make it not allowed, or put it, put in what we want and just add vinyl to the list?
I kinda like having the list. And I get yeah.
Is the board okay with vinyl, first of all?
I'm, I'm okay with some vinyl. I, I actually think it's a good option for some, some features. Should we say high-quality vinyl? Is there a different, like, we wrote high-quality cement fiberboard.
You really can't define it, you know, it's unless you gotta put a picture up of what you want.
Hmm.
Vinyl's gonna be vinyl.
Is there a certain thickness that comes with a better quality that might, I don't know?
No, it's, it's, the, the thickness has come with the different applications of the vinyl products. I mean, s- some of your, like, strip vinyl that you see on houses, you can get some pretty thin flimsy stuff all the way up to the real thick premium. But, you know, in terms of something that's architecturally significant, where you'd want it in a downtown area, um, typically it's, it's, the thickness is gonna be irrelevant. Um, one of the things to consider is that, um, you know, the, the getting wood these days is getting very, very difficult to do.
Right.
Unless it's finger-jointed. Um, I was talking with some contractors, you know, cedar clad board siding is three dollars a running foot. It's wicked expensive. Um, so if, you know, and brick has always been expensive, um, especially when you're buying a million brick at a time. Um, so why, my recommendation again is if it's something you don't want, list it. Everything else seems to be kind of okay. Um, just, I'm just throwing that out there. On the other hand, you know, just about everything you're talking about in the business districts, in terms of what the building is gonna look like, that all has to go through design review committee anyway. Um, for, for the, for the exterior features. So you're gonna be reviewing this to start with. So it's almost redundant that you have it, but if you wanna have it in, that's fine. But it's, my point is, it's, it's, it's gonna be looked at and either approved or rejected by DRC.
Hmm. So maybe Bob's right. Maybe it's easier to say metal. And I didn't know there are fiberglass buildings, like, this says metal or fiberglass as a primary finished surface shall not be used. But there is a type of fiberglass that looks like metal on the side of, like, warehouses.
Hmm. Okay, so do we just wanna reverse this and limit to, and say what we really mean, which is no metal?
Hmm, or fiberglass. Fiberglass doesn't look that good either. It's an industrial material.
Okay, so basically we're keeping the last line of this bylaw and the rest we don't need. Is that, is that true?
I guess so. I'd like, maybe Laurie and Bob can look, or I can look at seven oh nine oh two oh and see if that fits. Like, does it? It, does it make sense using it that way?
So what I would do is I would, um, I would write metal or fiberglass as a primary finished building material shall not be used.
That sounds good.
Hmm.
I like it.
Okay. All right, so this one has changed a bit from what it was, um, and I see there are a couple of comments, so I'm gonna bring them in. So I have Patrick F. Hi, Patrick, just your name and address. Oops, we can't hear you. Hmm. Think we lost him. All right, we can hear you, but if you, um, get connection back and wanna come back on, just put your hand back up. Oops, we did lose him, I guess. Okay, and then I have, um, Lisa Mazzelli. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Carrie and the crew. Lisa Mazzelli, thirteen Maple Street. Um, there's some things about when you say, uh, there's always this big question this last year of what in the world is, uh, what does a traditional New England look like? Well, there's so many different architectural, uh, names and such. I mean, in New England, your architectural landmarks are usually made out of the brick. You could have the antique homes and, and like white cliffs and, and that sort of thing. Um, if you're out in Arizona, you've got a ranch mine design and you've got a, a desert look or an adobe house that, um, that's considered, uh, southwestern. So there's a lot of different looks that when you're using, uh, an remark like a New England design, that we're in New England. You know, do we wanna, do you wanna put an adobe house downtown? That's okay, I suppose, if anybody wants to have it that eclectic that we don't have anything else that looks like that. Um, say you wanted to do your barbecue, Texas barbecue house, and we wanna make it look like something that's out west. Uh, you could make your whole structure look that way. But what we'd like to, I think, what we're trying to do is to create some sort of uniformity and how our, our, mostly the downtown business, I don't know about the homes in different neighborhoods, but, um, you know, each architect has its own, its own brand. I mean, uh, Frank Lloyd Wright was very modern, you know, uh, wide-open spaces and, and flat roofs and um, things of that nature. So you have to, you have to kinda make some sort of designation of what you'd like in terms of the area that you're building in. So if this is for what design review sees, saying something like the, a traditional downtown, traditional New England shouldn't be that far afield of finding things that, that would agree to that look. But, I mean, you've got all sorts of different names of things. You get something from a crude to a baroque to a, a whimsical. I mean, you could create anything you wanted to create. You just have to decide on how much uniformity you want your downtown to look like, or your, your whole Main Street to look like. If you look at most towns, they are conforming. So if you look at Westboro, you look at Hudson, these, like, the pictures that were in that, um, slide are beautiful. But you're looking at bricks, you're looking at, you know, uh, decorative. And, um, and I don't think it should be that difficult uh, to use that terminology, because you're not saying that it has to be a certain building, so to speak, but that it has to have a New England look to it. So I don't think taking that out is, is the best idea. I think limiting perhaps your materials, but even that gets a little crazy, because with years, some materials are amazing. Like, I do know that, you know, that certain key or, as a vinyl name, does make clad boarding and it makes shush, like a shingle look, which is fabulous. The bigger problems is that type of material fades. And after maybe five or six years, it starts to fade in different areas. Where you have to consider that too, and the longevity of the building and how it's going to look. So, uh, I think that when you get into the vinyl sightings and those questions, you have to look at that too for longevity. So, um, yes, wood's expensive, yes, brick's expensive, but anything else that you're gonna build in today's world is going to be expensive. I mean, you can make uh, brick out of a, a material that isn't brick. You spray it on and they, they carve it out. They did that to Central One Credit Union. That's not brick. That's all sprayed. So you can do some nice things with your materials, but, um, I think, I think you have to decide what you want your general area to look like. Um, do you want it to conform, or do you want it to just be eclectic, and that's what we'll have as our, is our theme?
Okay, it's a good point, Lisa. Thank you.
That does make sense. Now I wanna leave it. You know, because we did go back and forth with that, it, you know, the whole design review bylaws talk about traditional New England and
So it's currently in the design standards?
Yeah.
Okay, so what you're trying to do, this thing, this, um, particular bylaw is just matching up to what we already have. So when somebody comes through with their application, um, it's going to be what they're measured on in front of the design review committee. Um, so does it hurt to have it here, I guess? I don't
The, the main difference is that if you have it in the zoning bylaw, it becomes a standard. So it's a requirement.
Gotcha.
Uh, if it's in the guideline, it's voluntary.
But this bylaw actually came from the Milbury, um, zoning. And you probably didn't have a problem with it there, right? Nobody complained?
Well, like I said, it only applied to the industrial district. So the, the whole point was, uh, to not allow metal buildings in the industrial district. So it didn't apply to any of the other districts. So downtown, you could do, you could do vinyl, you could do, you know, all sorts of different materials, so.
It's so weird, because you think it would be opposite. The industrial district is where you want the metal. And I think I
That was actually my idea. Because we had a lot of metal buildings going up in the industrial districts.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, uh, the, we didn't particularly want more of the same. Uh, so the idea was to make the industrial district more attractive and get rid of the metal buildings. So that was the problem area, is all the metal buildings that were going in the industrial district. So that's what we were trying to address.
We've had a couple of metal buildings popping up near downtown and on Main Street, so. I, in, that's what I wanted to address with this, plus match what was coming forward with the designer view.
I mean, what if we just say, so it's reflected in there, the building finished materials, what if we put maybe appropriate to traditional New England architecture and may include the items we listed before, plus vinyl? And then we just make sure to say metal or fiberglass as a primary finished surface shall not be used. So that's the shell. You can't use metal or fiberglass, period. But we give a may for traditional New England structure and may include those materials. And then it's at least reflected in both places, but to the point of putting a shell, but not being able to fully define it, makes it difficult. Does that work, or do we can flip back to just doing cutting the whole thing and just going back to not, you can't use metal or fiberglass? So options are, leave it alone and use, keep shell and maybe add, um, vinyl. Change shell to maize. Also possibly adding vinyl. Um, or just cutting it and only including the metal or fiberglass. Does anyone, did I miss an option?
My vote would be for the last one, just cutting everything out and just prohibiting what you don't want. Simple.
My vote would be for the first.
Okay.
I would vote, my vote would be for the last as well. I'm with Anthony. I, I, I think New England standard is just too open of a, you know, something to have i- in something like a, a zoning bylaw.
Okay, Millie, your thought?
I could go either way. How about that? I agree with that it's, it's pretty open, but, you know, cutting out what you don't want seems to be pretty clear.
Um, and Amy, you liked the first one, I guess, um, there's really no true majority here. So I guess, for me, I wouldn't mind I, maybe maize, just make it even more wishy-washy. Um, I do, a- as long as it's, we do have it in the design review, um, guidelines, I do like that in there. And then the designer review committee could kinda push it a little bit further. Um.
You could have vinyl, add the vinyl in, like you mentioned. Keep it the way it is, but I'll have an amendment for town meeting floor if there's a lot of heartache. To just leave the last sentence.
That's the other thing we gotta remember, right, is that we've gotta get this through with a two-thirds vote. Right? So if you have something like New England style, it's gonna confuse everyone.
I just feel like
Know what they're voting on.
That people have been complaining about downtown forever. So do we
But wait, the only thing, I guess, the only part I get stuck on is that it's not, this is not just downtown. Is this only downtown? This is every district?
No, this is on Main Street. This is everywhere but industrial.
Everywhere but industrial, all districts.
Residential.
No. These are design review standards, but residential isn't included. Oh, Bob has
Keep in mind that single-family residential is not controllable in any way by a design review or materials or colors.
Okay, so this is just, um, every district in the commercial All the commercial districts, no industrial.
Right.
Okay, so when we think about the commercial districts, forget industrial, what, what does this board want? When you hear something like traditional New England architecture and you see these materials listed, is that something this board envisions as part of our planning? Or isn't enough to say no metal or fiberglass?
Does it make sense to take out New England architecture and say business, business, building finished materials shall be appropriate? Or shall be traditional and may include X, Y, and Z?
Well, stucco.
Again, yeah, traditional.
But isn't stucco like the southwest?
Not necessarily, if you think of um, like English Tudor. Um, if you think of. Um, like the Germanic style.
Delay.
Also, if you think of the shops, Northborough Crossing, I think some of those storefronts are more stucco.
Those, those storefronts, and I think what you're referring to is um. I forget the long name for it, but it's EIFS, it's basically fiberglass with foam with a thin coat of um, cementitious material over it. Um, basically stucco. Um, and there are big elements in New England style homes um, that would have that as a design element.
Mm-hmm.
But no metal.
No metal or fiberglass. Um. I mean, if we start to take out the traditional New England part and then we say, but shall not be limited to, then. We're just listing all these different materials, so the only reason we'd be listing them is to give them ideas. And then we would exclude, say no metal or fiberglass. So I don't know if, does it still have any point to it outside of the metal or fiberglass, once we start to pull out New England architecture anyway?
Remember, all of that is in design guidelines anyway, so thank you up there for the guidance.
I think having that subjective language just doesn't really, it's not gonna be clear. Um, you know, one person's New England could be something different for somebody else.
Okay, so it sounds like um. Somewhat of a consensus is to just cut to metal or fiberglass as a primary finished surface shall not be used. And will rely on the guidelines still for the New England architecture component for design reviews to sort of help interpret and guide. Is that the board's consensus there? I know Amy, you don't feel that way, but.
If it's the board's consensus, I'll go with the board because I want it, you know, to pass the town meeting.
Yeah, I think keeping it, you know, keeping out the, like Anthony said, keeping out the subjective language.
Okay, and Millie, you don't care either way, or not that you don't care, but you're not, you don't feel strongly either way. I don't feel super strongly, but I do think that'll come up as a topic for back and forth at town meeting. And even if you have backup um, language, I'm not, I, I would hate to see this not pass altogether, I don't know.
But if it's something that could pass, if you struck it out differently, like doing on the floor amendment, right? If you're open to change on the floor, something simple like that could be removed.
I don't think it's ever a good idea to change things on the floor, typically they fail.
I did months before. I had it typed up in advance, so.
Hmm.
It was the same thing, it was something like this that we knew could go either way and then it did go one way and I was ready with the other version. But.
We do have Patrick back, I'm gonna um, allow him to speak because he wasn't able to before. Hi Patrick, we brought you in before, but we couldn't hear anything, are you back with us?
Yeah, I think I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to point out that leaving in the traditional New England architecture. Um, is basically the same thing as a use variance, right? It's just a design variance and you guys seem to be against the idea of design ver- or use variances. So much like you want to zone to what you want, the bylaw should be written to specifically what you want. And it can be amended in the future, right? Just like you can add new uses and change your zoning at, at town meeting. If you want to add new materials, new finishes, new specificity, like you can, you can amend the bylaw in the future. So I just, I, I, I thought it would be worth pointing out sort of, you know. The board's desire to stay away from, from use variances and this seems to be the case, the same case here to some degree, so, thank you.
Great, great point, thank you. Okay, so then um, with that, would we want to um. List them and then if we have to cross it out, if we have to amend on town meeting, so be it. Or if it gets, it doesn't pass, so be it and we just go for it either way? Or it sounds like Bill, you don't want to do that, Anthony, you don't want to do that, Millie, you could go either way.
I mean, you know, honestly, I, I just. I don't think it matters that much, you know, because you're prohibiting two things and everything else is like, maybe yes, maybe no. It, it's not gonna change anything, especially if it's in the design guidelines, then, you know, if it's there, it's not gonna hurt anything. It's just maybe less clear.
I can see that.
Yeah, maybe we go for what we want to be the most clear, which is we don't want metal or fiberglass. And we rely on the standards and just make sure that everybody knows whatever you pick, it's not metal or fiberglass, period. And the rest can be sorted out in design review and start there. And then maybe next, maybe next time around, if we're seeing things come through or we're able to articulate what New England architecture is in a timeless way. Maybe then we kind of tweak it from there. So do you want to start with just metal or fiberglass as a primary finished service and not be used and then the flat roof piece as well?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, so we'll start there for that one and then um, up next. Oh Laurie, you're on mute.
I keep muting myself because the dog's crying in the background and then I forget that I muted myself. Um, so the next one addresses the issue of um, not really being clear. Where parking can be located um, in the uh, off-street parking requirement. So we're trying to clarify. As you remember, this came up during the uh, ice cream restaurant drive-through uh, that was proposed. Uh, so the question was, when a building, does it not sit parallel to a street? Where do you measure where the parking can be located? Um, so this change to the language would say that you measure it from the closest point of the building. So uh, the current language says, parallel with the face of the building. So that's it. Simple change.
Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, moving along.
Amy, I'm gonna defer to you on this one, this is the last one. So this is Amy's baby, so.
It's ten o'clock, let's see, I'm just gonna keep it to the slides. Um, this is a sign bylaw. And um, provides for definitions of flags and sandwich boards, gasoline canopy. And monument signs, set standards for the location number, type, material, lighting, and dimensions of signs in residence, business, and industrial districts. So is there another slide or that's it?
That's it.
Okay, let me find it. There are actually a lot of um, Laurie and I talked to town council today because there were comments from him. So they're part of this bylaw, I think we still have to tweak. Um. But what we did was change some of the definitions. And we added new sign types, which included awning signs, projecting signs. And what was the third one? I just have to find my pages, um.
Gasoline canopy signs.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the signs in the business district, we added, oh, we added window signs, awning signs. Projecting signs, there were a bunch of different signs that we didn't have in the bylaw before. But wanted to include as part of the downtown revitalization. So we included those, we changed the size of the signs. That were allowed in the highway business and the highway business southwest. Because there are a lot of variances being asked for up in Northborough Car- Crossing. And um, that's about it, if anyone asks questions.
Yes, what um, so you mentioned tweaks from town council, could you just briefly like address what those were so we know, so the board understands what?
Maybe I can, I've got my notes right here, if you want me to go over them.
Sure, that'd be great, or whoever, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, um, so on. Uh, under C five, non-conforming signs. Um, so he suggested that we add some language to that, to that um, phrase. So it would now say, non-conforming signs shall not be altered, enlarged, redesigned, or structurally altered, excepting conformity with this bylaw. And mass general law, chapter forty A, section six.
Okay.
So then under uh, D six, changeable copy signs. We wanted to add the second sentence that said, in the downtown business district. Uh, they are allowed only where used for gasoline filling stations and municipal or institutional purposes. Uh, he flagged that as being a concern. Um, because we are applying the regulation differently for different types of uses. Like for example, municipal institutional purposes. And he was concerned that this would violate free speech. So he suggested eliminating that second sentence.
Okay.
Uh, he was also concerned about the language for the next one, electronic message centers. Um. So he's saying, uh, so right, the language says electronic message centers are specifically prohibited in downtown business, business east, business west, business south. And all residential districts, except where used for municipal and institutional purposes. He said, either we have to allow them everywhere in those districts or not at all. We can't uh, give an exception for municipal or institutional purposes. Um, under sixteen, he suggested adding signs uh, after awning. So it would say awning signs are allowed for first floor businesses only and shall not extend above or beyond, et cetera, the language that's written there. Um. Then Amy had asked about. Adding some language saying that the wording on awning signs would be limited to the name and address of the. Establishment and he said that would be fine. Yeah, I, uh, is that something that you folks would be interested in doing?
So Amy, what made you um, suggest that, what came to mind for that one?
Well, I went driving around looking at awnings. And let me see if I have a picture here I can share, most of the ones in town right now have the name like the tavern on the square or. But there was a couple awnings I found in other towns. And let me see if I have it. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen.
Just remember that the um, uh, tavern or neighborhood tavern awning signs was granted a variance do that.
Right, because we don't allow awning signs yet. But so this is, when I was driving around, I saw this sign in a different town. So I, do you see it, the bar shop? So I kind of wanted, if we're going for a look downtown, a lot of the ones, I have another one I could show, has the name of the establishment and just the address. But this one had pictures and. So that's why I wanted to limit the awning sign to the name of the establishment.
Okay, board members thoughts on that?
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah.
I wanna see if there was another one. See if it's not, then people start putting everything that's allowed inside the building. We were trying to keep it simple.
Yeah, see, I, I have a problem with that because in some cases, you're trying to advertise what you're doing.
Right.
Why you're there, right? And so my biggest concern here is, is that, and I've, I've said this before. Just for that one item, I would say no to this, even though I agree with most of the other things. I think you're taking, you're trying to take too big of a bite. And eventually you lose enough people that you won't get it passed, right? And that's what's happened in past town meetings.
Well, I could say the design review will just take out awning signs if it leaves it open to something like this. Because we're trying to have a downtown that people will drive through and say. You know, there's a lot of complaints on the way the downtown looks, so if it's gonna be a free for all. Then I would vote against awning signs. But if we were gonna allow an awning sign to advertise your business.
But Amy, remember that awning signs are gonna go before design review committee.
Right, but if it's not a standard, then it doesn't matter because we, it's only advisory.
Hmm.
Right, but that other one you had seemed fine to me. I mean, I agree with this one, I don't know that I would want, you know, this one in, in the center of town. But that other one, this one here, I think is completely fine.
But if you review signs in all different towns, it's supposed to be the name of the establishment, not everything on the inside. I don't know what town this is in, this was actually for a sign shop and they were, I looked up window signs.
Right, the other thing, the other thing you don't want to do is you don't want to limit what a business can do, right? You want them to be successful.
Oh, I've got something there.
Hey, I, I got a question for Amy, I thought during the discussions, this, the signs on awnings would only be allowed on the, like that bottom rim.
Right.
Or that little overhang that is not the slope, but that kind of hangs straight down.
Right.
I, 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 I thought that was the only part of the sign that you were gonna allow, only part of the awning that you would allow signage.
That is what it currently says.
So if that's the case, you can't fit anything like that anyway, you're never gonna get an image like that in there.
But didn't we have a discussion then to add, because the tavern on the square doesn't have it hanging, it has it on the awning itself.
Yeah, but I don't think we made a decision, so I didn't change the wording. So it still says signs are allowed on the apron of the awning only.
So that kind of cuts the problem then, and does that cut the problem in your mind, Amy, that you're not, what are you gonna print there really?
Right, I guess it depends on the size of the apron, but yeah.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of towns have like twenty percent of the apron, but we left it on the full.
Millie, did you have something you were about to say?
I had a question about a different types of signs, so I don't know if anybody wanted to talk more about the awnings.
Alright, so let's close out on awnings, if it's just on the apron, do we think there's a risk of some, you know, Amy, what, what Amy showed? And Amy, do you think there's a risk still, based on?
I don't know.
I personally feel if somebody wanted to put their logo on the awning and the name on the apron, that wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to that. On the apron, that wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Looking to see what other pictures we used in our guidelines.
So Lori, right now it's only the apron, not the um awning itself or the top of it. It's just the apron.
Okay, so I'll just leave that as is. Um, so under E one. Uh, he said that we should not add the words awning. And the reason is because this is a section on signs, not awnings. So. Um, awnings may have a sign, but if they don't have a sign, they're not signs. So we shouldn't regulate them here. Let's see. I think that might. That might be it. Yep, that's it.
Okay, so for the changes the town council looked at, are those changes that we're just implementing? Or do we need to discuss? It sounds like we don't have a whole lot of choice. That's his recommendation and otherwise these are, may not get through the attorney general's office. Is that the right understanding on this?
Yeah, I mean, uh, there were a couple where he said that he just thought they were gonna be flagged. So the attorney general might um deny that aspect. So.
Okay, well, one that I.
It'd be safer to to change the language.
Okay, so the one thing that stood out to me was about the electronic message centers. So I don't know if as a board we want to resolve that one, because it sounds like either it's in for everywhere or it's not allowed. Is that what he's saying? We can't just, I could have sworn we were told the last time around, we couldn't stop it from municipal. Like we had to make that a ability, we weren't allowed to remove that, right? I'm not sure where I got that idea.
Well. I think what we were talking about is that. The churches, the schools, and the towns are the ones who typically use these electronic message centers. Um, so they are beneficial to those particular uses. Um, so by eliminating them particularly from the downtown business district. Then we're gonna have to, you know, the Lions Club sign. Is an issue. If the church wanted to have one, well, the fire station is talking about putting one up. Uh, so they wouldn't be able to. I know the churches use them for posting their services. Usually it's not electronic, it's a changeable message. So if we prohibit it from downtown business, then that's gonna impact a couple of the churches.
Wonder if we could get a second opinion about the municipal.
This is coming from town council, though.
Was this entire number twelve added in entirety or an edit? This is entirely added?
Entirely added, yes.
So prior to this, what was the circumstance? Were electronic message centers allowed or?
They're not. We just added it to call it out because it's all, we have so much wording in there, it's buried that. It's only allow in certain districts. So I put it up there to let people know, so it stands out that they're not allowed downtown business east, business west. Business south, they're only allowed in the highway and industrial business districts right now. So we could take out that whole number twelve and it, it really doesn't make a difference.
Or do we just need to take out except where used for municipal or institutional purposes? Because right now all the ones that are. I mean, right now they're not allowed either way, so there's no, there's no harm in this. Sentence except for the part where the town, where town council is flagged.
I wonder if we take out the whole thing though, so then it's not heartache at town meeting.
Changeable copy signs are allowed. In uh, all of these districts, I believe. So electronic message centers. I don't know where it says, Bob, where does it say where they're allowed? I'm looking in the sign by law and I. I can't really. Figure out where they're allowed.
I think if you go under highway, it says they're allowed, and if you go into industrial, it says they're allowed. And that's why I was adding it to twelve, to make it obvious for anyone who is applying.
You said highway business, Amy?
Uh, yeah, it does say under. On number three, under signs and industrial district. Electronic message centers may be used as part of a freestanding sign.
Maybe it's not under highway.
It's, I don't see it under highway business, which is strange.
I thought it was. See, I don't even know, but I know it, yeah, it's under industrial.
Oh, no, it is under highway business. Um, it's in the last sentence of freestanding sign under highway business. Electronic message centers may be used, same line as the other one.
Okay. So that's originally why I put it there. Because it isn't so obvious unless you read the whole bylaw.
I mean, I just think at this, like to Bill's point, this is gonna be, this has been an argument in the past, and I think it'll.
Take the whole thing off.
I mean, that's what I think. I don't know what other board members think.
We're getting rid of number twelve?
That was just my opinion. I don't know what other, Anthony, Bill, Millie, Amy.
Yeah, I think that simplifies it.
And we're getting rid of that second sentence under number six, changeable copy signs.
And then if you do, you don't even have to leave six there because it's not changing anything.
Right.
All right, okay. Anthony, you're on mute. Were you saying something there?
No, I just think, I think Bill's right. This signs can be such a lightning rod. It's like.
We gotta make sure to give the lightning rod to Bill again this year. He enjoyed it.
I'll do MBTA communities over this.
It's such a hard, you know, if you're on both sides, it's like you hear from the residents that you want it cleaned out. And then you hear from the businesses that they want to say whatever they want, so it's, it's a fine line.
Right.
Between the residents and the businesses.
But that's why I keep saying, you gotta make small advances each year, right? If you take small bites, it's easier to to explain what you're doing.
My first year, they changed the whole thing. And but nobody paid attention, probably complained. I didn't even know what I was doing the first year, so I didn't even know what changes they made. It was just so long. I was glad that someone else did it. But nobody questioned it and they changed the whole bylaw.
Okay, do we need to, what do we need to do with the non-conforming signs line? Um, he makes a comment on that as well. Is he saying get rid of it entirely or we need to?
He's just saying to add uh the phrase and mass general law, chapter forty A, section six. After accepting conformity with this bylaw.
Okay, and actually I think in just looking at um feedback, I I do see that Fran had commented on that as well in her email. Um, she was looking for clarification, but um Lori, do you plan to get back to her on that? Or could you just mention we changed that? She said she was gonna look to you for clarification.
Yep, I will get back to her.
Okay. Um, alright, anything else that he made an edit to that we need to discuss here? In the, as part of the hearing?
Hi, he did make edits to other sections of the bylaw. Um, which I just went ahead and incorporated all of those.
Yeah, did everybody on the board see um, they were, as far as I could tell, pretty standard for a town council. Uh, like clearing, cleaning up language a little bit. I don't think there's anything substantial. Did you see anything, Lori, that you thought was substantial?
Yeah, I mean, we've pretty much discussed all the most substantial ones. Um, Amy and I did speak to him because we had questions on some of his comments and he did clarify. Uh, and he answered the questions, so I, I think, I think we're good.
Okay, alright, I'm, I also want to allow for any um public comments on the last bylaw here. Okay, we have Scott. Hi, Scott.
Hey, Scott Rogers again, twenty-six, Tom Hocken. I think this is kind of echoing what what Bill said. Because I, because I don't, in terms of limiting the changes, there's one area of resistance. And I don't think you've ever been able to assess. The number of non-conforming businesses this will create with these, with these changes. So you're, you're likely to get resistance, right, from the existing businesses that will suddenly become non-conforming. So if you can reduce, you know, the amount of changes in one step, you're more likely to get it, get it passed. You know, Bill has said before that each change is, you know, you're gonna have diminished or increasing percentages against. And so if you're looking to do this, this round, be successful this round, try to be. Lim- limit the changes, um, rather than try to get them all.
That's good feedback. You were breaking up a little bit, but I got the gist of it. Sounds like less is more and um limit non-conforming was your feedback there.
Yeah, you got it. Sorry about the bad mic.
No problem. Thanks for the feedback there. Did we, I don't think, so I feel like this time around, we didn't create that um. Level of non-conforming uses. I feel like we gave so a little bit more flexibility in this one in terms of adding some definitions. This, this um, I appreciate your work on this one, Amy. This was a lot of work. I know you go for it. Okay, alright, does that conclude all of our um?
I, I just have a quick question while we're talking about signs is, do we have anything in our definitions that talk about those? Signs that are projected on a sidewalk?
Yes, we do. So we, we have a definition for projected signs. Uh, they're also known as blade signs.
No, Millie's talking about a really cool sign I've seen in Hudson where a light shines down on a sidewalk.
Yeah, where, where, I'm sorry, what?
There's one in Hudson, so like. Millie can describe if you want. It's actually a light, like a laser that shines on the sidewalk, so the name of the. It's the New City Creamery. And it shines on the sidewalk. Their logo and their business name. At night, so I didn't know if we had anything that addressed that type of signage or.
I think you have to be careful. Number one, if it's anywhere near a street, that it doesn't cause a traffic. Issue. We had one in town at the coffee house that showed TV images. Um, in the front window and we ordered it removed. Um, the other thing is that, who owns the sidewalk?
Well, that was my question.
If the town owns the sidewalk, you can't project anything on it.
Well, the, I've seen a number of different businesses that have these projected. Laser signs that go right on the sidewalk. They don't really disturb anything like traffic wise, but. They're, they're on the sidewalk.
And, and, and my question is, if it's a publicly owned sidewalk, I wouldn't allow it. It would have to be on their own property. Because it's illegal to have a sign on a business that is not on your property.
And that, I was just curious if we, that we had anything that was addressing anything like that, but.
They are really cool. Some cars do that, their rearview mirrors, or when you open the car door, it reflects down onto the ground. It's kind of like that.
Yeah, the overpriced Audis and BMWs do that. When you open the door, they flash their logo at your feet.
I saw somebody.
I don't know, like, oh, must be wrong car.
Why don't, um, we're not closing the public hearing, so we'll come back around. And uh, we need to take um, get all our edits in place. Next meeting, we will actually have to vote in terms of our plant, the planning board recommendation on each one. And then we'll have to look at MBTA one last time after we get the recommendations. Um, someone had asked about getting a copy to, you know, see what the edits are. Is that something that goes on the website, Lori, that people could look and see like what we've changed since this meeting? Okay, that's great. So that will be available for anyone watching and would like to see what those changes are, a copy will be available. Um, anything else? Oh, and also we'll have to decide who is doing which bylaw at town meeting. Lori, thank you for that um presentation. That's really helpful and helped us get through tonight. Um, even though some areas were sticky, that really definitely helped facilitate. Um, so think about.
Lori, Lori presented town meeting.
I know, Lori.
No, 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 no. I am happy just to be the person answering questions with Bob.
Um, so think about what you are dying to present at town meeting. And um, we'll do, we'll figure that out next time, so. Anything else on bylaws before we move on? Appreciate all the feedback from the public, whether it's calling in or by email or whatever the case. Um, it's great to have lots of involvement there.
If you could just uh make a motion to continue the public hearing to March fifth.
Six P M.
Whatever time you want to continue it to.
I'll just say six so that we don't have to wait for any reason, so is there a motion to continue the public hearing? For the um. Purpose of seeking public opinion. On proposed amendments to the zoning map and sections red for the Northborough zoning bylaw to March. Fifth. At six P M.
So moved. Are we meeting on March fifth? Was that the one?
Is that an election day?
It was one they flagged. I want to think after this one.
Yeah, uh, the agenda says our next meeting is March nineteenth.
Oh. Will that be too late after?
Special meeting?
Can we do the twelfth?
Lori, I think you told me it was closing on the eleventh.
Um, so. The way, the way it works is they're not going to accept any new warrants articles at that point. So what I'm gonna do is I'm going to make these modifications. And then I'm gonna forward our draft articles for uh the selectmen. And I'm going to explain that they should expect some modifications, so. Um, they, they understand that we're in public hearing, that we're awaiting additional uh information. And so I, I'd already talked to, to Tim, the town administrator, about um. Having changes that may be beyond that timeframe.
Okay, so um, could we then, do, do we have any applications coming up?
We don't.
So could we actually make the twelfth our March meeting period? Is there a need for any other March meeting? Because then we'd be coming back the twelfth and the nineteenth, which kind of seems silly.
I'm fine with that, if it works for you folks.
Board members, do you have a, do you want to do two weeks in a row or do you want to do? Alright, I seem like I'm asking a rhetorical question. Okay, so. Well, if everybody can do, Lori, the twelfth's okay for you? Is that okay? Not good for you? No. Are there any other options that week for us?
Let me, I might be able to do it. I would be coming back from the, from travels. I just don't know what time I'd be back at this point.
Is it, do we know, is there anything else in town that week that would, or Lori, your schedule, you're obviously critical?
Yeah, as you know, I have a lot of um, I have a lot of meetings, so Wednesdays I can never do. Um. Thursdays are a problem. I have two meetings on Thursdays uh that month.
Uh, okay, and that happens every week, so even the week prior, if we were to go back to the fifth. Um, well, is there an option for the fourth, the Monday night?
One thing I'm a little worried about is that I won't have the information back from uh Trudy Barrett. If we don't have the March nineteenth meeting, I'm a little concerned about that.
Well, what if we kept the nineteenth? Well, what if we kept the nineteenth, but we also met on the fourth? Wait, does the board of selectmen meet on the first Monday of the month or the second Monday? Hold on, we can look at the.
Actually, I know that month they're meeting on March eleventh, because that's when we're having the um, public meeting on Harrington Lane.
Okay. Is it possible for this board to meet on the fourth, the Monday instead of the fifth?
Can do that.
Millie, does that allow you to attend? And Lori, did it even work for you?
Yeah, that should be okay for me.
Okay. And then um, worst case, if for some reason the board of selectmen do meet on that night, which doesn't seem likely if they're meeting the eleventh?
I definitely cannot meet on the eleventh because that's when I have that public meeting with the selectmen on Harrington Lane.
All right. So let's assume the board of selectmen don't have a meeting on the fourth. And if we do, I guess we'll just compete for ratings. Um, okay. So thanks for accommodating. So then um, striking the previous call for a motion, I died on the floor without a second. So is there a motion to continue the public hearing for the purpose of seeking public opinion on proposed, on proposed amendments to the zoning map and sections of the North, North Borough zoning bylaw as presented in the agenda this evening to March fourth at six P M?
I'm on it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. So we'll plan on that. And then for the remainder, we still have a couple of items left on our agenda tonight. So we have no A and R's lot releases or bonds, but we do have discussion of Harrington Lane public acceptance activities. So Lori, do you have something for that?
Yeah, um, so the developer did approach the town uh, with his interest in having Harrington Lane accepted as a public way. Uh, so I've been uh, working with them to um, ensure that they are complying with the road acceptance process, uh, which is before the uh, select board. Uh, so the next step in the process is to hold a public meeting with the select board. Um, so we will be notifying the developer as well as um, those who live on Harrington Lane. Um, and uh, the planning board is asked to submit a letter uh, for that public meeting, essentially expressing whether you are in support of having Harrington Lane laid out as a public way. So in order for it to be eligible to be placed on the warrant, the select board has to lay out the roadway first. Um, so I did supply you with um, the ASBIL plan, the acceptance plan and the legal description. I've already forwarded the uh, draft warrant article to town council for his review and approval. I received his feedback. I did ask Fred Litchfield, uh, he had done uh, the inspections uh, when the road was under construction. He did spot inspection, so he wasn't out there all the time uh, checking the construction. So I did ask him to submit a letter um, for that public meeting. Unfortunately, I haven't received it yet. I was hoping to have it for you folks tonight, um, but I don't. So I did do a site visit uh, today. I did notice that unfortunately, um, the surveyor had cut out um, some areas of sidewalk uh, where clearly the sidewalk had gone over onto private property. So it had gone beyond the limits of the right of way. Um, so that needs to be addressed. Um, either the sidewalk has to be uh, completely within the uh, limits of the road right of way. Or uh, the town would need easements um, from the property owners where the sidewalk is placed on their property. So um, that's kind of a minor issue um, that we would have plenty of time to resolve uh, with the developer and the property owners. Um, so generally the process is, like I said, March eleventh would be the public meeting. Should the select board decide to do so, they would lay out the road. Um, that would be a motion. Then they would put the article on the town meeting warrant. Um, if town meeting agreed to accept Harrington Lay, Lane as a public way, um, then we would go through the formal uh, process of accepting the road. So usually that would be in the July, August timeframe. So we have plenty of time to, to resolve the issue having to do with the sidewalk. Other than that, um, construction looked good. Um, there was uh, some hydro seating that has to take place. Um, and that's pretty much all I saw.
That sidewalk?
Put in by the. I'm sorry?
Was that sidewalk put in by the town?
No, so the sidewalk was put in by the developer. And uh, so the concrete, um, I'm sorry, the granite bounds are a requirement to denote the uh, limits of the right of way versus the lot lines. And so uh, clearly where they cut out the sidewalk to put those granite bounds is where the sidewalk goes on to private property.
Okay, other questions? So Lori, do you need us to take a vote or anything or?
Yeah, it, you know, uh, I think a, a great letter would be um, i- if you feel comfortable um, making it a conditional approval. So subject to um, addressing the hydro seeding, um, the need to address uh, the sidewalk um, that is outside of the roadway, right of way, um, patching of the sidewalk. Um, and like I said, those are the only issues I identified. So.
It's questionable for endorsement or we're obviously not approving it. So is it an endorsement of the?
That you would recommend uh, the, the layout of Harrington Lane.
Okay.
Subject to addressing the following issues.
Okay, Amy, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, are they, do they, I might have missed it. Is there a timeline for when they need this letter? I was just wondering, do we wait for Fred's letter?
Um, so the timeline is I would need that letter for uh, the March eleventh public meeting. So if you want to kick it to May fourth, March fourth, um, then that would be okay. I definitely need it by then.
I would think we don't have to go through everything that you just went through again, but we could just double check, see what Fred comes back with. And then write our letter.
Fine. Does it, do you guys want to just read Fred's letter first and then give our approval?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So we will um, check out Fred's letter. Otherwise it doesn't sound like any um, big problems there. The um, consideration minutes from December nineteenth. So um, Amy, you had a question on the minutes that I don't know if was answered or not. So you made some suggested amendments, but one of them was actually a question. Was that answered or do we need to answer it?
I'll have to read. I, I did that so long ago. And it's so late at night. I don't even know what I wrote on the minutes.
If you're not sure, maybe we just strike it so you can.
Yeah, definitely strike my questions from the minutes. Those are more questions for like Lori, but I probably didn't answer.
Okay. So then did everyone have a chance to um, read the um, proposed amendments to the minutes for December nineteenth? Okay, any further amendments? Is there a motion to accept the minutes from December nineteenth as amended?
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, um, next planning board is now um, not March nineteenth, it is March fourth. Um, and then there's March nineteenth after that. Um, and Z B A is March twenty-sixth. Anything for the Z B A coming up?
Um, so that is the Tradavi.
Oh, that's in March. Okay, I thought that was February.
Yeah, so that was continued to uh, next week's meeting. Um, and we did receive some additional documentation in email today. Um, so that has not yet been uploaded on the webpage, but it will be if you folks want to check that out. It'll be on the zoning board of appeals webpage under projects and under review.
Okay, great. And next.
February? I'm sorry, I keep interrupting.
That's okay. I was just saying the March, the March twenty-sixth meeting. Are you saying February Lori or March twenty-sixth?
I'm sorry. I'm saying next week's meeting, February.
All right. So that is February. And then the Z B A, anything on March twenty-sixth? I'm just looking, going down the agenda.
No.
Okay. And master plan implementation committee meeting on March twenty-first. Busy, busy month. Okay. If no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Thanks so much. Have a great night.
Bye.
Bye.